Well, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the meeting of the Granville City Council. I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask Marcy to call the role, please.
Councilmember Galderlos.
Here.
Merringa.
Here.
Norhuck.
Here.
Steenstra.
Truce.
Here.
Vanderwaal.
Present.
And Mayor Mas.
Here.
So tonight for the invocation, we have Pastor Ryan Whelan from the Granville United Methodist Church, and I believe he's with us tonight. So for those of you who wish, I'd invite you to stand for the invocation, and then we're going to follow that by the pledge of allegiance.
As you feel comfortable, I'd invite you to pray with me. Let's pray. Gracious and loving God, we give thanks for this evening. We give thanks for this beautiful weather and for this opportunity to spend time in conversation and discernment. We just pray that you're, that we would be guided by wisdom and grace and compassion and care for one another. We thank you for this community in which we live, for all who serve in this community. We thank you for teachers and administrators, and we pray for safety for students during this summer. We pray that you would continue to guide each of us as we reach out in compassion and care to our neighbors, that you would build us up as a community, and that you would guide us in grace and compassion. We pray all of these things in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks for being with us tonight, Pastor.
Appreciate it.
Councilmember Steenstra is out of town and has asked to be excused. Is there a motion to excuse Tim Steenstra tonight?
So moved.
Support. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say yes. Yes.
Yes.
In the opposition, please say no. Great. We also have our agenda. We would like to make one adjustment to that, and that is after city manager's report, item number five, we'd like to go recess to a closed session to discuss a confidential opinion of council regarding the draft of the city manager's employment agreement. So is there a motion to approve that amended agenda?
So moved.
Support.
Motion, support. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say yes. Yes.
Yes.
In the opposition, please say no. We also have the minutes of our last meeting, May 20, which is a while ago. You've had a chance to look at those. Is there a motion to approve those minutes? Any support? Motion, support. Any additions, corrections, anything anybody would like to bring up, point out? If not, all those in favor of approving the minutes from May 20 meeting, please say yes.
Yes.
In the opposition, please say no. Presentation of the bills, hefty amount tonight, Ken.
It is.
Might be the biggest amount I've ever seen.
It's up there.
Yeah. About $1.3 million. So tell us about, tell us about.
It is a large amount, and it's not just explained by the fact that it's been three weeks since the last city council meeting. It is heavily influenced by a number of projects. A couple of these invoices are shown in the pre-written check portion as they were already processed when the proper paperwork came in for payment to contractors. But one of those is a payment to Franklin Holwerda in the amount of $169,834, and that is a progress billing on the iteration mixing project of the Clean Water Plant. That particular project, this is actually the ninth progress billing from, on this project. And so we're approaching the end of payments there, but still have a ways to go. With this payment tonight, we would have paid for $1 million of the $1.6 million project cost. The second one on there is to Camminga and Rude Boots. That's for our Ivan Rest Avenue Water Main Project, and it's the progress through the billing cycle here, which is not all of it again, but it was a big chunk of it. So that particular invoicing itself was almost half a million dollars, $4.9, or $493,000. Also, the blower project for the Clean Water Plant, again Franklin Holwerda. That one's just getting started. It's a design-build project. This is the second progress payment. It's only a total paid so far of $170,000, and that's a $4.8 million Clean Water project. So long ways to go on that one. But just those few bills constitute the majority of the invoices for tonight. When you move to the regular invoices, the regular portion, those that are recurring and that you're used to seeing, the only items I have to share there, page three of the invoice from Kent County, that is for the police dispatch services per our agreement with Kent County to provide that service. And the $93,000 amount covers dispatch services 24/7 from January 1st to June 30th of this year. Page five, Reith Riley. That one was $100,000. That's actually a final payment for a 2023 project to improve Chicago Drive. And so it takes a while to close out those projects. We finally have, this payment includes retention and takes our balance down to zero. And then we, I noticed the monthly water bill from the city of Wyoming for April, the billing is on there, about $75,000. So a lot of really large project-related expenses are on there. The rest of it looked fairly standard, but if there's questions, we'd be happy to try and answer those.
Okay, questions for Ken about any of the bills tonight? If not, is there a motion to approve the bills tonight? An amount of $1,348,911.70.
So moved.
Support.
And support. Any final questions, comments? Marcy, would you call the role, please?
Councilmember Merringa.
Yes.
Norhuck.
Yes.
Truce.
Yes.
Vanderwaal.
Yes.
Galderlos.
Yes.
And Mayor Mas.
Yes. Next item on the agenda is the presentation regarding the Metro Act permit request from Metro FiberNet. I'll see. Good evening, welcome.
Thank you. On behalf of MetroNet, I'd like to thank you for allowing us to present tonight. What my goal for tonight was, is first provide some insight into what the Metro Act is, how it can impact the city. We've been lucky enough, brought Dave Fritz. He's our senior director of construction. I'm going to do a very brief presentation, so is Dave. Feel free, interrupt any time, ask questions, because again, now is the time for all that. If we do have the ability for approval, then that's when all the paperwork starts. But again, we want to make sure everybody has full disclosure on what we're looking to do. So let me log in here. So first off, MetroNet, we've been around since 2005. Nation's largest independent fiber provider. Currently, we're operating about 250 communities, 16, I think went up to 17 states. So we're just adding more states all the time. Well, we provide fiber technology to the home, to the business. So with that, a lot of pros and cons. I can get into a little bit later about what specifically that means for the city. Basically, two things we focus on, quality of life and future-proof. There is no technology out right now that is stronger than fiber as far as information transfer. It's kind of future-proof, so we expect it to be five, 10 years. And then the one thing that we do compared to our competitors, hopefully most know this, we're symmetrical, both speeds, up and down. So when we sell a gig service, you're getting 1,000 down, 1,000 up. Most other providers aren't in that arena. They might offer 1,000 down, probably 50 up, 40 up. And what we found, obviously, the need for this service nowadays is because so many people working from home, Zoom calls, you name it, everybody. I'm a typical homeowner. When my kids are home, we've got watches, we've got phones, we've got security cameras, you've got everything going on at home. You need that speed both ways. So that's one thing that fiber will provide. We have a very strong litany of support, obviously, safety, Indiana 811, Ohio 811, testimonials from PC, UCLA, the standard in speed test, things like that. We're announced as the highest speed provider in many communities. So again, it's more about what we can offer the citizens. How we normally work first is a meeting like this to get, gauge your interest. Is it something that you feel would benefit the town, the city, the residents? What we do is privately funded. We come in, we sit down, Dave and his team will sit down, pre-construction meetings, talk about this is what it looks like, this is what we want to accomplish, what are your needs, permit fees, the whole kit and caboodle. So it's a pretty lengthy but thorough process. Once we do that, then shovel-ready is kind of the term we're using. We communicate all the way through the process. I think, again, in government affairs, I'm the point of contact. Any concerns, any problems, you've got my number 24/7. Because again, there are a lot of questions. I think one of the things that you find in this, a lot of people, what the Metro Act is, is really an agreement for right-of-way that the state provides. So we work with you in the right-of-way, everything else. A normal homeowner doesn't understand what the right-of-way is. They see someone out there in their yard walking around, they're like, get out. So again, we want to make sure we're working together to help explain so people understand. Part of our process with that, obviously accountability, transparency to the city. We don't want call volume. We provide specific phone numbers to get hopefully all of that off your back. Basically, they call our numbers, we create tickets, Dave and his team follow up on all those tickets to make sure those are all taken care of. Reduce any surprises, and then goodwill for all residents. What we do before we come into a city, again, village, township, neighborhood, whatever, we have a pretty standard process. Prior to coming in, month, two months out, you'll see PR activity. MetroNet is coming to the city. From there, about 30 to 45 days, the neighborhood will be mailed letters. After that, 10, 15 days, actually seven to 10 days, they'll get postcards, we're going to be there. And then down to pretty much, they start digging, they're going to get yard signs, and they'll get larger signs at the entrance of a neighborhood. It's all about communicating. I'll be the first to admit, 30, 40%, will drive by those signs, not even know they're going on. So again, we'll go out digging, what the heck's going on? That's again, you would call me, we'd work, call the customer, make sure everything's squared away. We don't want surprises. So that's all part of our campaign prior to coming in. Again, I just kind of went through that. This is what the letters look like. Postcards, very similar to this. Yard signs, smaller, and then these will be the larger when you enter the neighborhood. So again, that's our responsibility to make sure they're communicated as best we can. Again, I'm sure you understand, some customers, they won't understand, some customers that may not want the service, they're not going to care. So, but we try to do the best we can with all customers. Construction website, again, this is stuff Dave is going to touch on, so I'll kind of gloss over it. We put together a website. It shows where we're working, how we're working, it's all QR codes. We want customers or residents to look at this. There are training videos on what to expect. I can send out, you know, depth, how deep we drill, all that kind of stuff. But we send it out to people, we give you access to it, again, if you get any phone calls, but the whole goal is we take on that responsibility and direct people. Here's a construction site, go to there, it should answer all your questions. Any FAQs? If not, I've got a person you can talk to. So again, this is the process, another QR code, videos all over the place as far as what to expect. So our markings, again, I'll let Dave cover all that. Restoration, hopefully it's not a huge part of the job, but we know it is part of the job. If we go in and, again, if we're going to bury fiber, we've got to make sure it looks equal to or better than when we leave. There could be things displaced. We'll take care of all of that. That's all, all part of the job. Again, that's either with tickets. In fact, after we clean up something, if a customer's not 100% satisfied, that's when they would create a ticket, and we would look at it again. So we're very, very important that we meet their needs. I think one of the last things is our commitment. We actually just hired, I think for the first time, I've been here six years. First time in Michigan, we have a community engagement coordinator, actually, who's living in Grand Rapids. As part of that, it's not, it's basically just involvement. And I say just involvement, it's going to allow MetroNet to get involved in the community. Again, whether it's, you know, Halloween, giving out candy, whether it's parades, it's just involvement. But because we're starting to, to work around the area in a heavy way, we want to make sure that people see us. They don't just see the trucks. They see people either involved in a soup kitchen, involved in this and that. And again, all over Grand Rapids, all over the west side. I'm looking all over the east side. We've obviously Lansing East, Lansing, and then even Kalamazoo, Portage. So that's one of our commitments. I told you I'd be brief. Let me turn it over to Dave.
Good evening. I'm Dave Fritz, senior director of construction. I appreciate you giving us a few minutes to come in and talk to you about what we want to do. We're currently building in about 11 cities total in Michigan, with more coming on quite often, almost weekly, it seems like. The team that's coming in, I listed them out. It's a full team of people. When we come into town, we bring experienced people with us and hire locally. We try to hire as many as we can locally so that when we're done with the city build, those people that were hired locally can stay on and maintain the system. They're the best ones to maintain it since they were involved with building it. And then the rest of the team kind of picks up and heads up to another city or state, and we do it again. So we've got construction managers, control managers, field supervisors that are out in the field every day and continue to, to deploy the fiber. What do we do? We engineer the network. We've engineered this probably about 18 months ago or so. I think I was involved with doing that. We're constructing the fastest speeds of internet available, providing excellent customer service, caring for all residents, constructing aerial and underground facilities, setting buildings and cabinets for our feedout. In the Grand Rapids area proper, there are going to be two, there are two buildings and up to six cabinets that we feed from. Conduit, underground, all of our structures are ground-mounted, flush. We don't have anything coming up out of the ground like pedestals and things like that that you've traditionally seen. Our feeder rings are placed around the area, around your town. And it is, like Mike said, it's a redundant system, it's symmetrical. If there is a cut in the fiber, the signal automatically is reversed, and you won't see any outage other than right where that was, happened to be cut. Most people that have, experience a cut don't even know it because of the speeds turn around so quickly and keeps their service up and running. Distribution cabling going on throughout the system that comes off of our feeder rings and goes out into the neighborhoods, kind of spider webs out. And then we splice and test everything, and we release it for service once we're done with that. How do we do it? Again, we purchase local warehouse, set up all our material, bringing in the build team as well as start our local hiring, which we've already done. We begin submitting our permit applications to you guys and giving you our plans on what we plan on doing and when, and also provide you with a schedule. In the city here of Granville, I was looking earlier today, I think it's somewhere around 5,500 to 6,500 residents that we, and businesses that we plan to serve. It's roughly going to be, I think it was 285,000 feet or about 54, 55 miles of fiber that will lay within the city boundaries. And that'll run roughly, we'll spend about $3.8 million deploying that fiber for you. Directional drilling, conduit, setting the structures, pulling various sized cables in, restoring all areas within 96 hours of underground completion, responding to customer concerns within 24 hours. And then we QC the entire LCP prior to closing out the permits. Usually that happens 30 days after the release of that area. So 96 hours is our maximum to restore something. Usually it's done within 48. We have people that are out there that will ensure that that is restored. We do have, like Mike was saying, a footprint system where anybody that might have any concern at all from, you know, damage that might have been done to their yard that they're not happy with the way it was put back together, with notifying us that we, we have a sprinkler system we'd like you to avoid when you come through. And that's part of the communication that we send out. We ask them to notify us if you do have an electric dog fence or a sprinkler system, we mark that so that we can avoid it because we don't know where those are at. We do locate all the other utilities in there, but those are things that we're unaware of. Challenges for the build permitting. Permitting is usually the biggest hurdle that we need to get over, not only within the city, but especially permits, what we call for an expressway crossing that we need to deal with the state with, or railroad crossing. Those can be challenging and time-consuming. Railroad permits usually take up to six months. Those permits have been in for quite a while now because we know how long they take. And then poll approvals. We have got all the polls that are in the city into Consumers Power. They're evaluating all of those polls. They're very slow to get those back. We would rather be in the air than in the ground. I like both. If I had to choose, I'd rather have it in the ground just because it's better protected. But it is quite costly, of almost 10 times as much as it would be to go in the air. So I mean financially, it's better to go in the air, but reliability, it's better to go in the ground. When we come in to do this area, it's probably going to be predominantly in the ground because consumers, like I said, they just take up to a year. Lansing area, we're up to three years, waiting for them to tell us even no, that we can't get on the polls. So we do try to go down that road to get on the polls as much as we can. And then, what else? We have just a few photos of what's going on. So our footprint ticket system, we notify everybody of how to get ahold of us. We want them calling us, like Mike said, not calling you guys with issues. We want to try to funnel them to us. Any issue that comes to us, the homeowners are contacted within 24 hours by somebody local. Nine times out of 10, it's same day where somebody will come out and visit the area, take a look at what the concern is, and then have it rectified no more than eight days. Sometimes it's done within a couple of days. If there's something that we need to get an external person in to take care of that needs to get on their schedule, it can take up to eight days. We rarely, if ever, have anything go over 24-hour notification or contact or eight days to repair whatever the issue is. We have contracted partners that come in, we have in-house people as well doing the work. All of our contractors are vetted, very experienced at what they do. The machines that they bring in, directional bore machines, we don't use any excavators. It's all dug by hand to expose the existing utilities that are there and placing our boxes. So we try to do as little disturbance as we possibly can when we're in neighborhoods. We do pothole, which means we basically eyeball the utilities that are there today. We don't want to hit gas. We don't want to hit electric or telephone or anybody else, water. So before we drill past it, we know where the marks are, once we have the utilities located, and we open them up. We'll dig a hole roughly one foot by one foot, go down and find that utility so that we know exactly where it is when we're drilling and we can avoid hitting it. There are times where, you know, things will get hit. Those are usually corrected within just a matter of a couple of hours. Where if they have missed dig, goes out and mistakenly identifies a line or forgets to locate a line. Phone companies, cable companies have got multiple lines out there. They might have four and only three got located. We don't know there was a fourth one until something happens. But we do, again, try to avoid that as much as possible. The team that's in here is very experienced. I've been in telecommunications for 31 years. I've got five other managers, senior managers that are under me as well. Combined, it's almost 150 years' experience between the six people that are here. So you've got a very experienced team here in the city that's building it. And for the amount of residents that you have here, if permits weren't an issue, we'd be in and out in about eight weeks with what we need to build here. I don't know how the permitting is going to go. I don't know what capacity that you guys have in order to process those permits. That'll dictate the speed. We'd rather come in and knock it all out and get out of the way as quick as we can. We don't want to cause too much disruption within the city. And everything that we do is in the right-of-way or a public utility easement. If there's question about, somebody that's concerned about private property, we can have that state survey to ensure that we're not going infringing onto private property at all. If we do need to get onto private property, we always get the residents' permission to do so. There are times where we're shooting or drilling a roadway, we may need to get our machine back far enough to get the depth underneath the roads, which may mean we need to put the machinery on somebody's property in order to do that. And again, we get the permission before we do it. If they tell us no, we go back and we re-engineer it and figure out where else can we cross and redo the drawings and kind of go from there. Anybody have any questions?
No, it was a great presentation because I think one thing that you mentioned is reduce the surprises to the neighbors in the neighborhood. That's very important, that our residents know what's going on, so.
And we time that out to about 30 to 45 days before we start where those mailers go out. And like Mike said, then usually it's 30 days after that or 15 days before we start, they get another notification. And then three days before we start, yard darts go out. We call them popsicle sticks. They're small three-by-three plastic cards that we put out by the end of the driveway. Again, with our information, our websites on it, so that they know who to contact if there's an issue. All of my people are marked with our names. All the contractors have our name on their safety vest, all their vehicles have our name on it. They all have ID badges as well. We want the residents to know who we are. You've probably seen a lot of utility work going on over the years, and you see people working, you have no idea who they are. You know, they just have a white truck, guys are out there doing something, they don't know what. We want them to know who we are, we want them to contact us, and we want to make sure we've left their property as good or better than we found it. And we're very good at doing that. We've done a lot of restoration work in a lot of different states and a lot of different cities. They're all a little bit different on what they, they want us to do to put things back together, and we follow that. So if you guys have got specific rules about filled dirt or topsoil, things like that, we absolutely will follow that. In fact, that's what we're doing everywhere here in Michigan. There's only two cities that require it, but we put it across the board. We don't want people making the decision, gee, should we use topsoil here or not? It's across the board, they do. So it'll be the same thing here, it'll be backfilled with four inches of topsoil, seeded and strawed before we're done. So any other questions you guys might have?
Yeah, I kind of, a lot of questions. So there is fiber currently in Granville, in parts of Granville, correct?
Yep.
Okay. So if I was a consumer in my residence, and there's fiber already there, maybe it's by AT&amp;T, maybe it's somebody else, and you guys know your fiber, is my contract now with MetroNet?
We don't have contracts.
So how, then how do I access your fiber?
If you want to get on our service, you mean?
Correct.
Just call it, call in?
Right, so.
No, we're not connected with AT&amp;T. They, that's their own fiber. We're a separate company, just like Dave said. If you wanted, you would just call MetroNet and say, I want to switch from AT&amp;T to MetroNet.
Right.
And we set an appointment.
Okay, so you're, so you are a service provider.
Yes.
Okay, so then we, I would switch from, it's not in my neighborhood, but I'm just using hypothetical. So I would switch then from AT&amp;T to MetroNet.
Correct.
Okay. So for the neighborhoods that have already been dug up with AT&amp;T fiber, and maybe there's other fibers in this neighborhood, I don't know. You know, I guess I'm waiting for their concerns to say, another company's coming in to dig up my neighborhood. What's, what's the value? I heard all the stats, that's all wonderful. It sounds like it's a great, great opportunity. What's the value then compared to AT&amp;T?
It's, and I can kind of talk to it a little bit because I retired from AT&amp;T here in Michigan, and I'm familiar with where they had built. They did do some stuff here in, in your city, but what they did was a hybrid. But what they did was a hybrid system. It's not full co- or full fiber to the home. They've got, they call it fiber to the curb. Where they've got their existing crossboxes that are out there that have been there for, you know, a hundred years. We set a V-Rad cabinet, they call it, and ran fiber to that. And then cross-connected it to the crossbox. And they utilize the same phone line that you've always had to get the service to the house, which is copper. So they'll advertise fiber to the home, but it's actually fiber to the curb. And then it's, it's cut over to the copper. The problem with that is it degrades the signal. They're only good if you live within twenty-five hundred feet of that box. If you're farther out than that, the service just really goes down from there. So we've done a lot of research. I spent a lot of time in, in the Grand Rapids area, your city as well, looking at the fiber that might possibly be here. There is some, but it's hit and miss. Nobody can provide full fiber to the home unless they come in here and spend four million dollars. Nobody's going to do that. I mean, they're trying to upgrade the system that they have. They're trying to make that system work better. They're utilizing the current structures that they have to do that. But again, they're not giving the residents the full fiber to the home.
So your proposal then is to lay the fiber throughout the whole community? And then if I want to jump to it from my home to curb, that's an additional digging up of my lawn to get it to my home, correct?
If it's fed underground, yes.
Okay.
They will come and they'll run a drop, tie it into the terminal to your home and bury that.
Okay.
Usually if they do that, within three days.
Okay. Second question is commercial. So one of my businesses, I've been contacted by AT&amp;T saying, we're bringing fiber to downtown Granville. Can I put a box on your building? I haven't returned the phone call yet.
Yeah.
What does that look like comparatively to a commercial versus a residential situation?
It's really about the same. We're passing every home and every business. The business, if they're in service, would call just like a resident would, explain what their needs are, you know, what speeds they need, what they're doing with it. But it's, it's basically the same. We won't install anything on businesses unless they want the service.
So that would be an external installation? Like I'll say, Chicago Drive, right? It's a hundred percent concrete, right? There's no grass that you can bury things.
Right.
So you're going to, or is it going to be external?
No, I'm going to take out cement. I mean, if there's no green space and it's nothing but cement, we're going to have to remove it to get to what we need to do. Even if we just need a pothole or find the gas line to avoid it. And if we have to take out a sidewalk to do that, we'll remove the sidewalk so that we make sure we don't have that gas or electric. Especially gas. Gas scares the heck out of me because it can, it can hurt people. Electric too, but gas is really the biggest one that we avoid as much as possible. But it all goes back together when we're done. We spent about four million, almost five million dollars in the last eighteen months on cement alone. So I mean, it gets pretty costly, but you got to do what you need to do in order to get the services that are there protected.
My, my last question, and then I'll move on, is this all sounds fancy. Fancy is expensive. What does this cost the city, what is this going to cost the residents?
Nothing. Costs the city nothing. And then as far as what service you want, it depends on the speed. But right now, I think we're offering gig service for forty-nine bucks.
I'm paying a hundred and twenty for two-hundred mag right now where I live.
I'm paying one, one-twenty back in Detroit, but I've got AT&amp;T fiber. So again, nothing to the city. And then because we don't offer contracts, it's, you sign up what you want, whatever level of service is really what you're going to pay. I think we probably go up maybe a hundred, a hundred and ten, but then you're talking, again, the business ones, I came from the business side. Those range based on levels of service. Again, business has quite a bit different levels of service than a residential home because of privacy and lag time, all that. Business is just different. One thing I guess I wanted to add, I get the question a lot, just again to make sure. When Dave talked about an LCP, so let's say five to six thousand residents in Granville, it looks like a jigsaw puzzle the way we've designed it. They're polygons. Each polygon contains anywhere from, let's say, what, five hundred to a thousand? So five hundred to a thousand residents, businesses, hookups, passes. So Granville looks like all these different LCPs, it's what we call it. What will happen is, again, when a construction team gets started, he has a schedule. What they try to do is they follow, follow the rings. So you'll know where we're building, when we're building. And then, I don't know, everyone always kind of looks cross-eyed at me when I say LCP, but light convergence point?
Yeah, it's, it's how we kind of break the cities up into separate projects. Or we don't put it out and say, here's a five-thousand home, you know, job. We break them up into smaller areas. It's easier for the cities to permit that way as well so that they're not getting, you know, thousands and thousands of homes at one time. And everybody's a little bit different again on permitting. I'm not familiar with how the permitting goes here. We'll have those discussions afterwards with the other people in the city and your permitting department. That's usually the only thing that slows us down, other permitting issues. Most people have never seen this happen in their lifetime. You know, I know that a lot of people are excited for us to come here. The people who normally are not are the people in the permit department. They don't get extra headcount. They get all this extra work, but they don't get all that, that other help to do that. And it is intrusive, what we do. I mean, we're, we're opening up a lot of ground in order to put this in. So we want to, you know, again, make sure that people are, have a ability to get ahold of us whenever there's an issue. There's no doubt about it. Nobody has seen this done probably thirty years at least before somebody came in and actually built a network in the entire city. They come in and do upgrades here and there. Maybe a plan extension if you have a new subdivision that's going in and they go in and run service to that. But to blanket the entire city, hasn't been done in well over thirty years. A lot of people have never seen that before. And it's a lot of work, there's no doubt about it.
Yeah, so one comment and one question, I guess. My greatest concern, based on my personal experience and feedback I get back from, get from residents, surrounds the restoration piece. So a lot of times, you know, it was a wonderful presentation. And I'm sure if AT&amp;T came in, they would give us a great presentation telling us that they restore their properties. But my experience and others' experiences is that they don't do a very good job of that. So what if I'm a homeowner, homeowner who, you know, you mentioned the red tape can delay the process, that we're getting late into the season, you've done what you need to do, you take off, and now the next, it's the next year, the next season, spring, and I'm looking at my lawn and it is not looking like I was promised it was going to look. So do you commit to that twenty-four hour response, the ticket system, all of that, even when your crew has left and people are dealing with this problem?
Yeah. We're not going anywhere for at least four years. That's how long it'll take. I mean, in the whole, what we're doing is over almost a hundred and sixty thousand. And it's going to take at least three to four years to do that. We're not going anywhere. Even if we packed up and left tomorrow, you still have contacts of people that are here. They're not going anywhere. We're temporary, me and my team, the other guys are permanent. But we'll come back and do it five times if we need to. We do have people that, you know, ask for one thing, we do it, and then they want something else, we'll go back and do that too. We've got, we say that the restoration is done right away. It is when the digging is done. We do also have crews that come back after that and pull the cable through. Then I have crews that come in after that and splice it. Then I have crews that come in after that and test everything. So we have people that are visiting these sites two, three times after construction has been done. So we go up, QC it again when that's over because they might have went up on a curb, maybe created a rut in the right-of-way. Or it, we had downpours and some of the backfill compressed and washed out. We come back and take care of those as well.
And are you leaving behind those popsicle sticks that you mentioned every time that you're doing that process? Or is that only for the initial?
That's during the initial construction.
Okay.
And most people take them out of their yards right away. They don't like them, they call from work, is this? And I pull it and toss it. But we still, we, if, if we see that an area, you know, was missing those, they weren't notified, my guys also have door hangers that they can go up and hang on a door, sorry, we missed you. This is what we're doing. We try to avoid that as much as we can. I don't like people going up to homes. If people have questions that come out, that's fine. Usually if they're not home, it's like a post-it note, we'll put it on their garage door. Most people coming in might not like me. I never look at my front door when I go home. I come in through the garage, so we put them on that as well.
Kind of a follow-up, excuse me, question about property restoration and like winter-type issues. Do you do underground work throughout the whole winter? And how do you do that when there's like two or three feet of snow? Or you've cut holes in sidewalks or wherever in Chicago Drive? And you can't pour the concrete because of temperature problems? How do you, how do you handle those issues?
We keep track of all of them and we come back and do winter restoration, we call it. So we're back in the spring, going back and visiting things that we did in November, December, January, and clearing those in April, May. Cement and asphalt, you know, they shut down asphalt plants in the fall, late fall, and it's hard to get. Well, if we have to take out a sidewalk, we put it back usually with cold patch if we can't get the asphalt. And then it gets marked down to come back and be permanently restored in the spring. And the same thing with any road cuts that we do. And I haven't met with your permit department, to be honest with you, so I don't know what their specifications are for street openings. We try not to open as much, you know, very little if we can. But there's times we don't have a choice, we've got to see it for safety. We try not to saw cut. A lot of people come in with a cement saw and they'll cut out a two-foot by two-foot piece of road and peel it out of there, dig. We don't do that. We do eight-to-ten inch core drills. So all you're going to see is a hole about that big around. We use vacuums to go down and suck all the dirt out until we find the utility that we're looking for. And then we backfill that with a sand material that has a high compaction rate because we definitely don't want anything settling in the roadway. So we use sand to backfill that and then asphalt to cover. Some areas, we take out the slug, we call it, when we core drill it and take that out. Some cities are fine with us after we backfill it, putting that core back in and sealing it. Then again, that's up, specific up to your city and what they would require us to do.
Are you open to a permit that would prohibit winter underground work?
No. I mean, to be honest with you, I'd rather not. Because once we come in and start building, we don't want to stop. If we come in and start building this, it won't be an issue. I'll be in and out of here in two months. So we won't even run into that bad weather. But, you know, it causes a lot of problems if we get shut down. One example of this, say, is Portage. We've done a lot of work in Calamouz and Portage. Portage shuts everything down on November first, and you're not allowed to do anything until April first. That's a huge problem. You know, I've got a lot of stranded capital out there. I've got teams in there that are, you know, set up to do the work and can't for five months out of the year. And what happens is a city like that, which is twelve to eighteen-month project, is going to take three years to build. I can build Grand Rapids faster than I could build Portage right now. So, you know, winter restoration is important, but we do track it. We photograph everything that we do when we're done with it that day. Both inside the vault when we open the box, the conduits that are placed is photographed, the outside is photographed. They're on our maps. We call it our Network Operations Center. We can pull those photos up at any time. I can look at something we did when I built Tallahassee, Florida, or Lexington, Kentucky. We can go back and look at all those photos. But any restoration work is, is kept track of and we revisit.
Just to follow up to that, maybe a question for Dave. Winter activity that is ongoing, but restoration being difficult, does performance bond become a possibility to address the councilman's question about making sure that it ultimately gets handled?
Yeah, that's a great, a great point. So under the Metro Act, as council knows, when you get an application, there is a time period for getting a complete application to respond and either approve or deny the permit or approve it with conditions. And the, there can be conditions imposed on the permit. One of the ones that is specifically contemplated to be imposed is a, is a performance bond. And, and the statute basically says municipality may require as a condition of the permit that a bond be posted by the provider, but shall not exceed the reasonable cost to ensure that the public right-of-way is returned to its original condition during and after the provider's access and use. So I, I heard the twenty-four to forty-eight hours, I heard ninety-six hours. Councilmember Geldrill, this is excellent question about winter and how those time periods work in winter. And then, of course, what happens if there's construction during the winter and that restoration's not happening until the spring? So, Ken, to your point, a bond might be a good condition to impose to make sure that sort of spring restoration occurs. And I'll let, you know, Charlie may have some thoughts on this too. But that might be something that's a good idea to think about, if the council will think about, yeah.
Your thoughts, Charlie?
I'm all in favor of the performance bond. I'm a hundred percent because it, it puts a little heat on the contractor to make sure that he's going to get it done in a reasonable time, twenty-four, forty-eight, ninety-six hours, whatever it is. But I would definitely support him with those. And in winter time, yeah, it's going to be shut down for winter time and put a little hardship on you. But if it's twenty below zero, you're not working.
Right.
So maybe you go cold, like December, January, February, we could look at something like that. Those are your worst hard winter months because you're not going to get any restoration done.
We hope to have it all done before fall. I mean, if we can get started on it in the next few weeks, we'll be out of here, like I said, within eight to ten weeks max.
Is that weekends too?
No. Unless you guys are fine with us drilling on weekends. I mean, we can, some cities allow, some don't. I mean, we are working Saturdays, some cities don't want us working on Saturdays. But that's up to you guys. You say we can, we will.
Dave, is there any possibility of work in unusual hours? Is this all going to be between seven AM and seven PM or?
No, I don't let drillers start until eight o'clock in the morning. And they have to be done by four-thirty drilling. They may be out there for a couple more hours after that, cleaning up, filling in any holes that they might have opened or doing restoration. But they're not allowed to start a shot after four-thirty. A shot usually goes anywhere from a hundred feet to maximum of about six hundred feet. So if they're, get something done and they pull back the conduit at three-thirty and I'm going to turn around and start another shot, we won't let them. You know, because they won't have enough time to get it out and bring it back. So we shut them down and don't let them drill anymore after that. And then if you've got something going on, maybe a parade or something happening within the city, you guys just let us know and I'll, I'll shut them down, you know, half a day on Friday or whatever it is and stop them from working if you guys have something happening.
Any other thoughts, comments?
Yeah, a couple of questions. So this is all really great information, so appreciate the presentation. And you already answered some of my questions, but one question I had was, do you ever co-locate your, your fiber? Like, for example, I believe we buried utilities in Chicago Drive when we did the streetscape downtown. So is it, is it, would it necessarily be the case that you would have to dig up sidewalk? Or could you co-locate on an already existing conduit that's there that utilities are already using?
If you own it, yes. If you own the conduit and say we can use it, we will. If AT&amp;T or Comcast or somebody else came in and did it, no. They won't, they won't allow it.
Because you're a competitor.
Right. I wouldn't allow them in mine either. It's just the way it is. But, you know, if we have issues, if something happens while we're drilling, you know, we, we work with them. If, if AT&amp;T got damaged by something that we did, we usually will put in the conduit for them and replace it right away. But no, we don't co-locate with anybody.
Okay, other than like poles, like you said, if you get permission to use poles?
Right, yeah.
I don't know how that works with permission. If poles are owned by multiple utilities or, because there's often several services on a pole, right?
There are, yeah, and there's a lot involved with it. I mean, there's, consumers has poles, sometimes the phone company or the, or the cable company could own them. Sometimes the city owns them. So it just depends. But we know every pole that's here and who owns them. But there's a lot of analysis that needs to be done before you can get on it. Loading, you have to see how old is the pole, how much loading can it take? There's wind shear calculations that need to be done on it as well. There's a whole lot of things that need to be taken into account. The biggest thing is clearances. We have to maintain forty inches from power. Any power, meaning a streetlight, neutral, whatever it is, forty inches below. If you drive around town and look, they're in violation today because they, you know, they didn't, they didn't, they didn't build it where it should have been. The power company lets somebody come in and encroach on that power zone. When we come in, we typically go on top. So if somebody's already in violation and we go on top, we're going to create a bigger violation, we won't do it. If there's room to move all of those comms down twelve inches, because we have to stay twelve inches away from everybody. comms down 12 inches, because we have to stay 12 inches away from everybody, if you look at the pole, you'll see somebody here, 12 inches, another 12, 12. We'll move them down if we can and attach at that point. The problem with when you move them down, now you might create a clearance over a road. You know, we don't want it, we can't do that either. But that's again, something we work with power companies on. A lot of times they'll come to us and say, well, yeah, you can get on this pole, but you gotta replace the pole. We need a taller one. Okay, I've done that. We've also gotten, you know, invoices from them for $50,000 to replace a pole. I'm not gonna replace a pole.
If you do that, you'll take the old pole out, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah.
We got a few of those redundant poles around town.
Yeah, I know, I know. Well, they're supposed to, let's put it that way. I know the power company's lowest priority is removing old poles.
Yeah, that takes a while.
Yeah, it's fill-in work for them is what they, they used to call.
So you wouldn't add any new poles though, if you're, you'd be looking to go underground?
You let me, I will.
You'd rather go underground though?
I would, yeah. But it's faster to go in the air. That's the only real thing that I, I, it's the only pro, is fast. Money, it's a lot cheaper to put it in the air than it is to put it in the ground, but that doesn't, that's not a deciding factor for me. Like I said, in the ground, it's better protected.
So if you're in my neighborhood and you're going in the ground, what does that look like? You said there was a smaller, like a, what, two by two, one by one hole that they cut? And then is it, it's all underneath from there?
Yeah.
Or there's like a, a strip cut down the lawn or?
No, we usually, every 50 feet, we'll locate the facilities. If we're drilling, you know, down, you know, 500 feet or every 50 feet, we're gonna open those utilities up and make sure they're still where we think they are. Because when you're drilling underground, depending if they're paying attention or not, those facilities can kind of veer off track. You know, you, you locate it here and you think, here it is, and then 40 feet down, it makes a right turn. And if you don't look, you won't know it. You think, well, it's there and then you end up hitting it. So we do pothole those along the way. On our termination points where we've got splices or terminals going or a 90 degree turn, we set a box in the ground. Those are bigger. Those are 32 inch by 24 inch. The service vaults that we put in are eight inch by eight inch. They're small and they're all flush mounted. They're all a dark green, flat color, plastic.
So you can mow over them and everything?
You can mow over them, yeah. You can landscape over them. You know, it, it doesn't bother us if somebody wants to cover it up with, with landscaping. It won't hurt anything. We know where they are.
Okay. How often are those vaults or those?
The terminal vaults, it, it depends. Terminals feed up to eight residents out of one terminal. So they could be accessed up to eight times, depending on if people order service and when. The other ones, the splices, the bigger ones, unless somebody cuts it, they're never gonna be opened again. So there's only a select few that'll have access regularly.
And are you able to work with, if there's a particular nuance to somebody's front yard or whatever, are you able to work with people to say, well, this is, you, I wanna put it here, but no, it's really not the best place to put it. Could you put it over there?
Yeah, we do. We, we keep them on property lines. I don't like boxes in the middle of somebody's yard, so we keep them. What I, if you look around in the yards and you guys have probably seen it, I call them pedestal farms. You gotta, you know, maybe a, a power transformer or you got cable TVs, got a pedestal that sticks out 30 inches, then phones got another one. Ours will be right in that same area, but you will never see it. Because it's, like I said, it's flush mounted. Nothing's above ground. And if somebody does have an issue during construction, as long as they come out and ask that question while it's being done, we'll do what we can to move it. Once it's constructed, chances of it getting moved at that point are gonna be slim. Because the structure's already in, cables are already in and spliced, it can be relatively expensive. We're dealing with one right now where we've got a gentleman that doesn't want the box there. It's out next to a stop sign, so it's not near his property, but he doesn't like it there. I can't move it at this point without spending about $85,000 to do it, which we're not gonna do. We have a permit to put it there. The city is fine with it there. It's just the resident doesn't like it. So we've done a couple of things to, to, you know, kind of appease them. We actually covered it up. We put dirt over the top of it and seed and straw. Now, I don't do installations. That goes to another department. I don't like working on people's homes or doing anything like that. All our stuff's out there. So they're not gonna be happy when they go out there to have to install somebody and they can't find it. And then they call me and, oh, it's buried. There's dirt on top of it. So that causes a whole nother issue because now they're gonna take all that dirt off, get to do what they wanna do, who's gonna put it back? You know, so it's rare that we do that, that we cover them, but we can.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Randy?
Yeah, I've got two. Thank you for speaking and answering my questions. So, I mean, I think the last thing I can speak collectively that we want is more poles around town.
Do you? I can put them all on the other side.
How do you make that determination when you're gonna, I mean, if you get permission, say, going down one street from AT&amp;T and Consumers, but not the cable company, you're gonna put, if you have like permission to use six poles, but not one, are you gonna go underground for that whole stretch?
Depends. They call that stitching and they do that a lot. Where they'll give me five poles, deny me the next two, give me the next three, I'm good. The next one, I'm not. So it just depends. If I have to dip down, if I go in the air for six poles or, or 400 feet or whatever it is, and then these poles are denied, if I've gotta go back down in the ground, I'm not gonna go in the ground for a couple hundred feet. I'm gonna stay in the ground for about 1,500 feet because it causes us problems pulling cable. You know, we pull, our rings are, you know, the one around here is about 14 miles long. That's one piece of cable, 14 miles. I don't like cutting it unless I absolutely have to. And when you're pulling a piece of cable, and our cables are, are 25,000 foot reels. So when we're pulling those and you're, and without cutting a 20,000 foot reel and you're starting to go in the air and then you gotta go down and then go back up again and back down, it's very, very difficult and chances of damaging that fiber are high. So if they deny the poles, we usually will put it in the ground and leave it in the ground until we get to an area that I have significant amount of poles to go back in the air.
Do you ever add poles in any circumstances?
I do, but that requires your permission. To your right of way. If you tell me I can put poles on the other side of the street, I'll put poles on all day long. Most people don't want more poles. They want less. There's a lot of beautification going on where the poles they do have, they've got, they're putting out stuff to put them in the ground and get the poles out of there. So.
And the crews, you said you were beginning to hire those subcontractors or, yes?
Well, yeah, subcontractors, we also have in-house as well.
Thank you.
Yep.
City attorney has made a suggestion that I think is really good. Cause I see that this Metro Act permit is kind of a standard permit, but it does allow in paragraph A, the performance bond or a letter of credit. And that is maybe, he suggested, city attorney, maybe having city engineer take a look at that and say what would be an appropriate performance bond. Anything else with that?
Well, we, my only thoughts, I guess, are we have to act on this within 45 days after receiving a completed application. I don't know that the application fee has been paid yet, so I think we're good there. But I'm not sure if, if the council's preference is to make a motion that it is approved subject to the, the engineer's, the attorney's approval or if you're suggesting, Mr. May, that we come back again on this and, after talking with the, I would think that we approve it contingent on the city engineer approving.
Any other contingencies other than the performance bond that you can think of?
Uh, well, there was, there was good discussion about the amount of time that, within which the restoration would occur and how that would be impacted by winter conditions. So I guess if the, if, if the suggestion is that can be completed within 96 hours and then, you know, if, if it's, if winter conditions delays that, then again, once it's possible in the spring, that 96 hours starts running again, that sort of a condition might make sense.
Okay. And Farnham has, has reviewed the?
We have. It's a, it's a standard, it's a standard form. And so the, as I indicated under the Metro Act, we have a period of time to act on it, approve, deny, or approve the conditions. Can't deny it unless there's good cause to do that. But it is appropriate, I think, to add those conditions that we discussed.
And the condition about the timing and winter conditions and so on, is that something that you could help draft?
Sure. We could, we could either, we could, I think we could either come back the next meeting with some pre-drafted conditions or I think, I think we could craft them tonight if you're comfortable doing that, if the council's comfortable doing that. Effectively, I think on the, on the bond, it would be that the city engineer would need to approve the bond amount. And my expectation is that would have to happen based on, you know, MetroNet's engineer explaining, this is the amount of open, you know, right away that's gonna be at any given time.
Right.
And then that would be approved by the city engineer effectively with the process. And on the, and on the 96 hours, like it could just be restoration within 96 hours unless it's delayed by winter conditions, in which case it would occur as soon as, you know, weather prevents.
We shouldn't run into that problem, but yes. In a performance bond, we don't have an issue with that.
Okay. I would think that's a pretty typical thing.
Some areas, yeah. Some don't, some don't care, others have. So, you know, just whatever you guys require, it's fine with us.
So it's up to council whether you want to just approve it with those conditions or come back again. Thoughts?
I'm comfortable moving forward with the conditions. Seems reasonable.
Yeah. I see some, okay. Any other questions, comments?
Yeah, I'll just say, my questions have all been answered. And I was very impressed by your commitment to restoration, I gotta say. As a property owner on a, with a corner lot, poles on both streets, who's had utility work, have had one of those poles replaced in recent, you, you know what I'm gonna say, because you've heard this, I'm guessing all over the state. This is why you said this. And I wrote several of the things that, I mean, they're horrible.
Yeah.
AT&amp;T and Consumers, their contractors, they're awful.
They never go out and look at them.
Right.
They never go out and look at them.
That was what I was gonna ask you about, but you said, you said, we have people out there to make sure it's done.
Yep.
And you said you have contractors and in-house people as well.
Yep.
And that impressed me because I, they never check is exactly right.
No.
And you, they don't care.
Like I said, I came from AT&amp;T. They'll hand them a job and say, here, go do this and come back when you're done and they'll give you another one. And nobody ever goes and looks at what they did. My guys are out there with them every day. They're, they photograph them, they take electronic audits of the work that they're doing, if they're being safe or not. If there's any issues, they'll shut them down. They're instructed if they, if they drilled today and tomorrow morning they come out and they start drilling again, if my guy goes back at what they did yesterday and they haven't restored it, he will go up and take the keys out of that machine, put them in his pocket and leave. You can have them back when you restore what you did yesterday. So we stay on top of them pretty good. The contractors know we will stop them. So they're, they're pretty good about getting it done.
Well, I'll be really impressed if it turns out that way and I, I trust it will.
It doesn't call me.
Yeah, I know, we will. Four inches of topsoil too, wow. I mean, it's like gravel and, and mine, you know, right, you know, and most of grandos like that.
We remove those soils of everything that we disturb and we bring in fresh, fresh black dirt and put that down.
You know, I love the sound of the fast upload and download speed, but it, this sounds like a lot of work and a lot of money. Are you sure you wanna do this?
Okay. I think from a consumer's perspective, once you have that speed, you will never go back.
No.
You really won't. I mean, it just makes things, quality of life so much easier for everybody, for businesses, for residents. Again, like Dave, TCI, AT&amp;T, Comcast, I've worked for them all. And there are not many people that are symmetrical both ways. And again, people, find people who've gone that route. Again, it's like, it's great. Changed my life. People working from home, again, Zoom meetings, holiday long, no problems, no interruptions, no cutouts and reliable. So. I had a couple more quick questions, I guess. So you just about got me sold on switching, but switching. I've already got library and I might switch. But if I would join your network and use your, subscribe to your service, what would it cost me to run that line from the road to my house and get that installed? No cost for installation?
You would create, you would set up an appointment with the company. They would schedule it when they're available. They would go out, have a ton and holler two hours. You may have to come back to bury it, but.
How's it installed in my house, around my house?
Good question. I know they use what's called an ONT, which is an optical network termination. So they'll come to the side of the house and they'll put a box there. And it's a small little box that they'll put on the side of the house. And all that is, is an entry point for the fiber to come in. There's a slack loop put in it and it goes directly into your home and to wherever you're putting your modem and your router and all that stuff. And it plugs directly in. So you've got no splices from your equipment out to our network at all. So, but again, I don't do all that stuff.
That's okay.
But I have seen it over the years on how they do it. It's a pretty slick process.
Do you have any experience with like a public Wi-Fi network? Like offering Wi-Fi in public spaces, like, like our downtown or air parks or?
We just had a request from city yesterday. They wanted to do the parks. So if we can get fiber in all the parks, we can even put up Wi-Fi equipment. I mean, that would be a bit for business department, but when I was in business, we did it all the time. They wanted a baseball stadium, have a Wi-Fi network, parks.
I did, I did a couple cities in Ohio, we did all the traffic signals, all the cameras.
There's more potential for additional service.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. But yeah, I want to stress, no cost to the city or residents whatsoever.
Ken, I've got a question for you about the, the fee is probably pretty nominal, but I'm not just in glancing at this, I'm not seeing that.
We sent an invoice, sorry, talk about the application fee?
Yeah, yeah.
We sent an invoice over last week, I think, Thursday. I didn't check to see whether it's coming yet or not, but I think it's in process.
It's in processing right now. I mean, really what, what happens, I think, what Dave was mentioning is, once we get approval to move forward, I submit a whole package for the Metro Act. So it should have the permit fee, it's gonna have the agreement, it's gonna, it's gonna have everything. Then I'll get back in your hands and that's probably when the clock starts ticking.
Okay. So that's kind of like a wide condition that the fee gets raised.
Yeah, I, I'm not worried about that. I'm sure we'll get it because I know it's in process and I can confirm for the council when it's received if you want to, so.
Any other comments? Otherwise, is there a motion to approve entering it or granting the right of way, telecommunications permit, subject to those conditions? One is performance bond, letter of credit, as per city engineers' approval. And the other is 96 hour restoration, except in winter conditions. And that, as soon as winter conditions are terminated, then back to 96 hours.
Excellent.
Is there a motion to that effect?
So.
Motion support. Any other comments? Marcy, yeah.
Thank you for the time.
Thank you. No, thanks for the good discussion. Marcy, would you call the role, please?
Councilmember Norca?
Yes.
Truce?
Yes.
Vanderlaw?
Yes.
Gelderlos?
Yes.
Merricka?
Yes.
And Miras?
Yes. When are you gonna start?
Tomorrow. I mean, I could. I absolutely could.
You gotta pay the permit. I don't think that's gonna be a problem.
Soon as that's done, I mean, we can start immediately.
All right. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
For sure. Thank you.
Thanks.
So you just accomplished item number one in the city manager report. If you're keeping scores, you're good. All right, time for public comment. Anybody here tonight like to address the council please that's coming up to the podium? Give us your name, address, and then let us know what you're thinking about tonight. Carolyn?
Hi, I'm Carolyn Fredrick, 3848 Crowfoot. Before the two gentlemen leave, you obviously acted on it sooner than I anticipated, but I'm not against them at all, but I just wanted to encourage this performance bond because I personally suffered through the, the AT&amp;T crew from hell, where they walked off the job in September, never returned. We put up with seven months of yards that were dug up. One of my neighbors had a boulder roughly six feet in diameter that was left in the middle of her yard because they had dug it up as they were doing it. Of course, the hole that it came from was still there. We had a neighbor on the corner of one of the streets that had about a six foot wide, six foot deep hole in the concrete blocking the intersection, or the sidewalk rather, at the intersection. They put a piece of plywood over it and they'd walked away and left that. So I hope that we don't have that same mess happen with this group because AT&amp;T will never get my business, but they did hire the contractors from hell, so.
Thanks for the comment. And I see the gentleman are both available here. Thanks for the comment, and I see the gentleman or both of you here, so.
I would agree with you.
Good evening.
Hi.
Hi.
Ken Rainio Navahov. I've been here thirty-five years. I've been with AT&amp;T and was sold there, fiber optic. And now that, listening to MetroNet, now I understand, every time it rained, we had no communication at all. And so they sold me on an in-house, all wiring, you know, "We'll come and fix it." Well, two years of paying that, it don't leak in my house, and that never got corrected. So, we need MetroNet.
Thanks. Appreciate the comment. Anybody else here tonight like to address the council? Any item on the agenda? Sir, it looks like you're ready to come on up. You're among friends here tonight, so.
Mike Campo, Chaminade Street, I think, used to be called Drive. I think myself, my wife, and some of our neighbors are here, and we would like to talk about the potential change in parking for RVs, and we see that's on the agenda for tonight. We would like to speak in favor of making no changes to the current policy, which is, there's no limitation on whether or not you can park your RV or, or travel trailer in, on the roadway. We moved to Granville over thirty years ago, and ever since we've been here, it's been, you know, well-known that this is a place for families. And, you know, family activities have been encouraged, and there's been a lot of city activities that have been good for families. You just have to live here for, for a few years, and you, and you can see that. If this ordinance has changed so that a person cannot park their, their travel trailer that they use for family vacations, which is a quintessential, in my view, of family activity, I think, and you, you know, you're not, you're not gonna be able to park from ten PM to six AM. There's gonna be an awful lot of families who will not be able to go camping. They will not be able to have a, a travel trailer. It's, all you need to know is that to get your refrigerator cold enough, it takes eight to ten hours for the typical RV refrigerator. Now, that's changing, they're changing to different refrigerators, but most of us don't have those refrigerators. So, how can you leave on an early morning vacation to go somewhere if you can't park your trailer overnight to get the refrigerator cold so you can put your food in the refrigerator? You don't want to get to your campsite and have your, your food spoiled, because your refrigerator never got to temperature, or down to temperature. So, I think if you change your, we feel, if you change this rule to what the proposal is, there's gonna be an awful lot of families who are not gonna be able to use, utilize their, their recreational vehicle. And to say, "Well, just park it in the driveway." Many neighborhoods in Granville are not set up that way. The driveways are too short. All you need to do is look at a typical travel trailer, and they will not fit on, on a person's driveway. If there's too much slope in the driveway, that's not gonna be conducive to parking in the driveway either. We'd all love to have driveways that are, you know, that long, but we like our neighborhood, we have a very good neighborhood, but it just was not laid out that way to park, you know, that, that type of vehicle in the driveway. So, for those families who, such as ourselves, and are, and many of our neighbors, who need to park in the road, that's, you know, I had a boss twenty-five years ago, apparently this went around at the same time, the same topic went around at that time, I should say. And, because I remember him talking about it, and he tried, he came here and made the point that you can't, you get ready for a three-week trip, or a two-week trip, or even a trip to the state park in less than probably twenty-four to thirty, forty-eight hours. It just takes a little while to get everything into that camper and get it ready to go. So, this, I think, would impact a lot of families in a very negative way.
Great. Appreciate the comments. Thank you. Anybody else? Come on up, give us your name, address, let us know what you're thinking about tonight.
Good evening. Mike's neighbor, four one eighty-eight Chaminade. Been in Granville now for probably thirty-seven years, as Mike states, very family-oriented, loved it. We've had three travel trailers now. We follow all the zoning, it's not stored there, it's not stayed out front. When we first got here, we asked the question, because our driveway's kind of like this, plus we share the, between two houses with Bob, there's not enough room unless I take and put cement on his property and my property, and now our travel trailer won't even fit there. And we asked, "Well, can we leave it out front just for getting it ready to go?" And we checked with the lease department. Yeah, no problems, as long as you have four days out there. And then we were even told at that time, "Hook it up, get it a little longer." We don't play that game. Takes good two days to get the refrigerator set and ready to go. For going to an extended vacation, it might take three days, or gone to third day. We put cones up to the front of our property, we make sure that we don't bother the neighbors, we'll accommodate any way we can, so our trailers aren't out there the same time and block, so people are weaving. The most we've kept it is probably four, maybe five days, where we've had to wash and wax it, maintain it, so it looks nice too, and then we're gone. Next time, it might take only two nights, because it's cleaned. Winterizing, you have to get trailer ready for winter, we store it off-site, as I said. To get it ready, takes maybe three, four days, by the time you winterize it there, and it's gone. Can't fit it in our driveway. No way to do it. If we got only one day, I don't know how you come back from vacation like we came back. We could go Friday, or Saturday, and drive it all day, we got here at four, I don't know how you, I'm getting everything done, so we comply. See, we want to comply, we like Granville, but the flip side is, we gotta be able to utilize it, take care of it, and then store it off-property. So, changing parking overnight, don't see how it's possible. Don't see how the other five, six hundred, seven hundred people in Granville have trailers are even aware of that, they may get a citation if they, what do we do with our trailers? How do we utilize them? So, quest is keep the way it's been, set up a four-day if you have to, then it'll go through something. But not just tell people, "Hey, we don't want to use your trailer anymore," because we're gonna institute, for whatever reason. We put cones up, like I said, for safety, so. Cords, you know, cross sidewalks, hey, you can put up all kinds of safety things to work around that. I guess reevaluate that portion, think long and hard, because there will be a lot of citizens that will be upset when all of a sudden they find out, you know, that, "Hey, I travel trailer can't fit in the yard, we can't use it anymore. What are we gonna do?" Thank you.
Appreciate the comments. Thank you, sir. Welcome.
Hello. I'm Robert Smith, forty-one seventy-six Chaminade, so I'm in the Chaminade contingent here. There's probably seven or eight trailer owners just in our little development, within a couple blocks. And I would guess that almost all of them have to park in the street, because of the driveway tilt or other reasons. Some of the things that I'm able to, I figured out I can pull my trailer into my driveway. And I, the tongue of the trailer is probably three foot, three and a half foot from the box of the trailer. So one of the things on here is that it must be five feet back from the sidewalk. Well, that doesn't, you can see around the box of the trailer to see the sidewalk. And one of the concerns that was expressed at the planning commission meeting, "Well, what if there's a little kid riding down the sidewalk?" Well, I back my truck in the driveway when I have my trailer there, so as I ease out, I can see fully around the trailer, I know if anybody's there. The other, the other issue is the ten to six AM parking. And our neighbors have already voiced their opinion, they have big fifth wheels, they cannot get them in the driveway. Everybody who parks out there is well aware, they put up cones, they do whatever they have to, and it's home for cleaning. I bring mine home in the spring to wash it, wax it, and I take it back. When I'm going to use it, three days ahead of time, I'll bring it home, get it loaded with all our stuff, get it washed again, take it out camping, when I come home, maybe three days again, once again, to clean it all up, to empty it out, then it's back into storage. I like your seven-day limit to storage as it is now, only because that does affect property values. If somebody has a trailer sitting in a driveway all summer long, they're not using it all summer long. You're gonna take it, use it, bring it home, it's gonna sit. I don't agree with that. I'd rather have them taken away, put into a storage facility or wherever you're gonna store it, and get it off your property. But other than that, I'm just, I agree with the neighbors that have been here and have voiced their opinions. We do need a way to bring it home, to have it be able to get it ready to go, bring it back. And I know one of the concerns at the planning commission meeting was to say, "You're gonna have a big cord coming across your sidewalk if you have it in the street." That's not true. Right now, our neighbors all use a small extension cord. There are attachments you can buy to do that, it's not something that you have to have that big cord across the sidewalk. So it's not a safety concern as some people would have liked to have thought. I'm just wondering too, how many of you are RV owners? Any of you? That's interesting. So I hope you take our consideration.
I am, yeah. And I, I've heard, and I'm gonna, just, I've heard you speak, you know, I've heard six thousand pluses and six thousand minuses to everything we've gone through, and I appreciate you coming and constantly giving your, your support for, for this. And, and I will say that the folks who come here, you guys are not the problem. It's, it's probably pretty clear, right? The folks that come here, you guys care, you guys take care, you, you say you wash, you wax, you do all the things. I don't think you're the problem, so I hope we can come to a solution that makes everybody happy-ish.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Public comment?
Can I just ask, what actually is the problem?
Why the change?
Why the change? I mean, I have, in thirty-seven years, I haven't had a single complaint. One neighbor at one time, because we have three or four, ended a comment, and then they came around and we said, "Okay, well, make sure that, you know, we don't all park together." No problem. So I don't, the problem is to make a big change.
We have our planner with us tonight, Chris, I don't know if you want to address that question?
Well, I suppose the origin of the process to, to start talking about making these changes, uh, came from a, a run of complaints that were handled by the city, or came into the city, and city found that they were, it was difficult to enforce the ordinance as currently written, because of some of the time limits, and how do we know how long certain things have been certain places? While at the same time, maybe not necessarily addressing some of the safety issues where things are parked. So that was kind of the initial assignment the planning commission was given, and obviously they've been, discussed this for a while. We brought some ideas to this body and then took them back. A, a, and ultimately, the recommendation does kind of go in both directions. It makes, it removes the time limits, with the exception of a seasonal time limit, while also imposing more, more stringent locational requirements. That was kind of the planning commission's idea, let's push here, pull there, and see if that helps. Obviously, we're, we're receiving now comment on, especially the on-street component, and that being a struggle for some, for some folks. So, I think at this point, there's plenty for council to talk about on this issue, and I can answer further questions when we finish public comment.
Thank you. Anybody else like to address the council during public comment? Yes, sir?
When Chris is talking about complaints coming in, is the majority of them from one household? Look at the number of people that are RV owners, I mean, taken consideration. You may have a whole bunch of four sales lines, because I don't know if I will get rid of mine.
Appreciate the comment. Anybody else? Public comment? Yes, sir?
Sorry to jump up again. One thing, I guess, that did occur to me, to maybe tag on to what he was saying. If this is coming from just one individual or two individuals, maybe it seems to have an ax to grind or something. So, we got rid of the RVs, did it. What's next? That's what I would ask you. Would this, would this person be satisfied? Maybe pickup trucks are next.
They're big, let's get them out of there, can't see around them.
Well, then after pickup trucks, then what, after that? I'm just wondering, is this just gonna be one thing after another, and the RVs are just the beginning? So, I would, I didn't think of that sooner, so, sorry.
Appreciate the comment. Thank you, sir. Last call, public comment? Okay, if not, we'll go, kind of, we've started already, into zoning ordinance twenty-four dash zero zero seven, and that is regarding parking. Chris, anything else you would like to talk to us about that?
Would it help council if I ran through the key policy points that are,
That'd be helpful.
including the proposed amendments? So, as noted on the agenda, it's actually two different amendments, one is to the zoning ordinance, one is to ordinance twenty-five, which is the traffic and motor vehicles ordinance. The amendments to the zoning ordinance, just to summarize them, with regard to the parking of RVs in front yards, the current ordinance requires that that be done on a paved surface, that would not change, that's still required to be on a paved surface, a driveway or other paved surface. The current ordinance requires that an RV not block a sidewalk, that has been interpreted to mean any part of the RV sticking into any part of the public sidewalk. That would be amended to be a five-foot setback from the sidewalk to give some clearance distance, rather than allowing it to come right up the sidewalk. The current ordinance has a limit of seven consecutive days and a separate limit of forty-eight days per year for front yard parking of an RV. Those would be eliminated and replaced by a May one to October thirty-one season, in which it would be allowable to park an RV in a front yard. Again, on a paved surface, at least five feet off the sidewalk, but it could stay there the whole season, it could come and go, there would be no restriction on that aspect of it. In a side or a rear yard, there are actually no proposed changes in this area from a substantive standpoint. If you look at the actual amendment, we did change some of the language around to try and make it easier to understand, but from a policy substantive standpoint, there are no changes. You may store an RV in a backyard at any time during the year, it does not have to be on a paved surface. It does, however, have to be at least two feet from the property line, and your backyard or side yard that it is stored within must be enclosed within either a six-foot-high fence or six-foot-high screening landscaping. So if you have an enclosed backyard, you put the RV back there, keep it two feet off the property line, no further restrictions. Then finally, the amendment to ordinance twenty-five, which is the one that pertains to on-street parking. Under the current ordinance, the interpretation of the police department is that an RV falls under the same parking rules as any other vehicle. So, if any vehicle is allowed to park in a given location along a curb on the street, an RV can be parked there, under the current ordinance. The proposed ordinance would add just one rule, but it is obviously a significant rule, and that is that an RV would not be permitted to be parked between ten PM and six AM. So, that is, the plans were some discussions were about how, to allow sort of drop-off pickup, setup, unpack, pack, that kind of thing, without allowing an RV to sit in the street for a long period of time. And there, kind of where they came down on that was, let's prohibit overnight parking, you can come and go. You can come and go, you can pull into the driveway, you can pull out of the driveway. You can't let it sit there overnight. That's where the planning commission came down in their recommendation. But I do think it's important context that the, the purpose of that was to disentervise parking an RV there and then leaving it for weeks in the public driveway. Understanding that we've already had trouble saying, limit of seven days, limit of four days, limit of forty-eight days, because we don't know really when day one was. We don't have the enforcement capacity to know when day one was. It's hard to know when day seven is. Without that, the solutions the planning commission came up with. But obviously, it's, it's a complex issue. I think this has been discussed. You know, I've been working with you guys for five years now. This is the second time I've done this. I know many of you have been here much longer, and this is the third, fourth, fifth time this issue's come up. This is not an easy issue. It's not an easy issue any of the places we work at McKenna, because you've seen all the different facets that come into it in terms of people being able to use their personal vehicles while ensuring the safety of the community at the same time. So with that, I'm open to discussion, questions, instructions, or anything else from council before you table to the final vote next time.
I've got a question. We've got our planning commission chair here, as well as JR, who's on the planning commission. So I know you spent a lot of time on it. So kind of the Reader's Digest version about the on-street parking, because that seems to be the, what's, what was the rationale behind that?
You know, I think that was probably one of our most difficult facets to this potential amendment. You know, the, the great news about the planning commission is, is we all live in different parts of this community. And so where I live, it wouldn't be a problem, because I have a, a wider street. Traditionally, my neighbors and I have longer driveways, so it's not a problem. We have other members whose streets are very narrow, and even streetcar parking causes a problem. And they've incurred, in, in, you know, they've, they've been a part of problems with, with larger RVs who literally do sit there all summer long. It's not the two, three days, you know, that we're, we're typically, people are camping for. And so we, we, we've gone back and forth on it. And I think the primary concern is safety. And I think that's why this was passed limits test through the police was safety. You know, the, the setback from the house, safety. Now hanging over the sidewalk, safety. I don't love the ten to six personally. I, I said that publicly in, in the planning commission. I don't know what the solution is. We've been talking about this for hours and hours and hours through the planning commission. So if, if anybody here has a better solution, we're open for it. And I am gonna say this publicly, the planning commission is a volunteer board, and we do happen to have a vacancy. So if you are an expert or want to lend your expert advice, you can submit an application through Marcy in the clerk's office.
I will second that.
Carol, anything else you want to add to that?
No, I, I think JR's really hit the, the nut right on the head. We struggled with what to do, because to be honest, your directive from the city council wanted us to look at it and come up with something that was enforceable. That was emphasized, enforceable. Find something that we, when we do have a complaint, yes, it is not only one person, but it is primarily from one person that comes in and complains. And then when the compliance officer doesn't act within fifteen minutes on the complaint, then it escalates, because then the person comes in and complains to the city manager, complains to the, to the city treasurer, complains to everybody. But as I said, it's not just one person, folks. It is not just one person. Get that straight. So part of the problem is, how is it enforceable? If we remove a parking restriction, we just don't take that in, and I realize what that implies, then we will have, for example, what we had happen this year, is we had a travel trailer, I don't know the exact length of it. It sat out on the street for what, eight months, JR? Nine months, ten months? It was surrounded by tarps. God only knows if they were working on it or not, but it, the street isn't that wide, so people were constantly having to drive out and around. And then what complicated it is when the person across the street parked their mobile home out there too. And then we could barely get one car through. And we're not talking the old sections of town, folks. We're talking the newer sections. So how do we get something that's enforceable if you say seven days? You can leave it out for forty-eight hours. You can leave it out for thirty-seven days, because legally, you're not even allowed to chalk the tires anymore. You can't do that anymore. That's against the law. So when does the thirty-seven hour start? When I notice it and complain? Or did it actually start four days earlier when you set it there? So you've actually got four extra days. So that was part of our problem. What we came up with, as JR's pointed out to, we looked for safety purposes. And is it safe to leave two travel trailers sitting out on a city street? You know, think, for example, go across the street here to Maple Street, Grand, Superior. Think in terms of a twenty-five-foot travel trailer sitting on both sides of the road, across from one another, how safe is that? That's, we don't know the answer either, folks. We're doing, we're doing what we think the council directed us to do, to get something that's enforceable, but maintain safety.
Appreciate the background and the rationale. Thanks. Justin?
Yeah, I appreciate that as well. I know that I was one of the people who asked for us to revisit this ordinance, because when we first visited it, I voted against it, because I didn't think it was enforceable. And I think that these changes are much more enforceable on the top portion here. So when we create a season, we take away, I mean, if it is one person who's driving around and counting days, that's very unfortunate. But if we're gonna have that as a rule, it is the rule. So why have a rule that we don't want, or that's being abused, or whatever? So I like the move to the season. I also understand the five feet from the sidewalk, even though I do understand that that can be difficult based on a person's driveway length and location and pitch and all the things that were mentioned, but for safety, I'm on board. The one area that I still am maybe questioning is the enforceability of the on-street parking rule. So based on what I just heard, if there was a camper out there with tarps on it for ten months, that was already in violation of a rule that we have. So I'm not sure if those rules are not being enforced currently. I've heard at other meetings, we have not necessarily always enforced the winter parking with fidelity. So this rule is creating another enforcement issue that I think, I'm not gonna ask the chief to say publicly, but I, I'm pretty confident that if I asked him, if he's receiving a call at midnight about a theft or something like that, and a call about a trailer parked in the street, I, I'm willing to bet what his priority is gonna be in that. And so I still have questions about the enforceability of this particular portion, and whether or not we're going to be able to do that if we're not already enforcing some of the other things that are happening.
I would say one thing in response, just to, I, I think that if it was on-street parking, even the RV with the tarps on it wasn't gonna be in violation until it violated winter parking or something, some other rule. Simply being there, maybe if it was inoperable, would have to violate another rule, rather not, it, it simply being there was not a problem. Which, and that's, and that is potentially fine. I don't, I mean, we have operated as a city forever without a special RV parking rule in the street. I, I do think from an enforceability standpoint, defended a little bit in that if a police officer sees a, happens to be on the street at one-thirty in the morning and sees an RV there, parking ticket. We know it's in violation, it's not allowed to be parked there. We don't have to figure out when it was there before, when, how long it's supposed, at one-thirty in the morning, it was there, it's in violation. Yes, how often are we gonna be out doing that? I, I don't think that is a great use of the police's time, I'm sure. But at least in the moment, it's enforceable, rather than we have a complaint, we go out, we don't even know if it's in violation, which is what we have going on right now. Which, and actually, Justin, that was your point. You made that point a couple of years ago, and you're absolutely right. Appears to have turned out that way.
I wasn't gonna say I was right, but you said it.
I defended it at the time, and you said I was wrong, and you turned out to be right.
I do think the tarp one was in a driveway, though.
Oh, okay.
To be fair. That, that one, 'cause I know exactly which one, Charles is referencing, was in a driveway. There's scaffolding around it. There, there may still be. It's a long-term project, apparently, so.
Yeah, and I guess just to wrap up my thoughts, you know, I, I usually come at things from a perspective of, which this is no secret, that I'm not a big fan of government rules and intrusion unless there's a reason. And so if we're going to create a rule, there ought to be a very strong reason for that rule. And so, because once we create that rule, it does empower people who want to use that rule against their neighbors, whether we like it or not, they can use that rule. And so I have to ask myself, is this a rule that I want people calling and reporting their neighbors over, because the rationale for it is so strong that we must have this in place? And I'm just not sure that that's where I'm at, so.
Randy? Randy, Josh?
Say, I share a lot of the same concerns that Justin expressed about the enforceability piece. You know, the on-street parking restrictions during the winter can be a challenge. We don't have code enforcement between ten PM and six AM that I'm aware of, so that means the police department's gonna be enforcing this. And personally, I'd rather than be out chasing bad guys than, you know, looking for trailers that need citations overnight. They've got a lot to do, especially during this time of the year. There's a lot of calls when it's warm out, there's a lot of activity and things like that. So personally, I think that's more important. And I think this is a little bit perhaps discriminatory towards, I mean, towards people with trailers, because you got people that park their work trucks on the street all the time, you got people that park their, you know, trailers to haul stuff with on the street all the time. There's no other restrictions during the, during the summer months, vehicles parked on the road. I mean, I, I agree that, you know, in the winter months, the same should apply to trailers, you know, to those other vehicles, but I'm not sure that it's fair to impose that on people that have trailers when other vehicles are allowed on the road, and some of which are, you know, quite large as well.
It is true that our commercial vehicle standards in residential districts are much less restrictive, on the logic that those leave and come back every day. But that's a good point. We do, I'll, I'll just say this, 'cause if you look at the ordinance, we do not treat them the same. We are much kinder to commercial vehicles. It's something the planning commission can look at if that's the council's opinion.
Randy? Well, with all due respect to everybody who's worked on this, with the greatest amount of respect, because this has been a long-term issue, long-term problem, and everybody has put a lot of work into it. I, I just don't like the changes that we're making. If you have a twenty-four-foot trailer, which is not a huge trailer by any stretch of the imagination these days, add a three-foot tongue and a five-foot setback from the sidewalk, you're at thirty-two feet. I can go around my neighborhood, I've got a neighbor with a single-stalled detached garage and a single-wide driveway. Not everybody has a double-wide driveway. I have other neighbors that have a double-wide driveway, but there's not thirty-two feet for them to put their trailer. If you go around some of the older parts of our town, I'm thinking off the top of my head, Gable, Rue, Vine, twenty-eighth, twenty-seventh street, if you take away the option of allowing somebody to pack their trailer around the street overnight for a few nights, there's no way that they're going camping, for the very same reason we didn't put sidewalks in little neighborhoods, because those driveways are so tight, there's not more than twenty feet there. So from that perspective, I don't like this. Another thing I don't like about it is the season. If you're looking at section B, number three, November one to April thirty, no recreational vehicle shall be permitted in the front yard. We have people, and I hope to be one of them soon, that's going to decide to take my trailer after Thanksgiving and go to Arizona, be back for Christmas after New Year's, park my trailer in my driveway, around the street, not on the street overnight, obviously, but we have snow power and this, but park my drive, put my trailer, my RV in my driveway, and park it, because I'm gonna go to Florida for six weeks. You've just totally allowed any snowbird or any senior citizen in the community to be able to use their RV in the winter, the way I am interpreting this and reading it. I do not have a problem with people leaving their trailers to pack them on the street for, pick a day, three, four, five, six days, but to say that you have to put it in your driveway every night and take it back out the next day. We do have driveways that have a, have a pitch to them, where forcing it to be in a driveway where there's a three-twelve pitch, you likely can roll out into the road if it's not blocked or braced properly. I just, it's a bee's nest. It's just, you know, this is a cluster. I just don't like it. I'm just not gonna support it.
Any other comments, questions?
Well, yeah, I, I find myself in total agreement with pretty much everything that Councilman Gelderlofs just said. I, I frankly, I don't see this as an improvement over the old ordinance. I, I don't, I don't see the point in being kinder to commercial vehicles over RVs. In fact, I would go the other way, myself. I prefer to get the big commercial trailers out of the street. And I, I also have no problem with an RV staying there two, three nights to, to pack. I do realize those refrigerators take a long time to, to cool down. You know, this gives, I don't mind the vehicles in the street. I recognize where there might be problems in some areas. It's just, it's just never gonna be a perfect solution. There's always gonna be somebody that's just not gonna be pleased about it, you know, as long as we don't have it there, or allow it there to be there indefinitely. You know, that, that's, that's the main thing, it seems to me. So this, it gives me, it, it, it makes, it makes it possible for people to put their RVs in front yard for longer periods, which is what I don't like, and take them out of the street, which I do think is okay. So, no, I'll be voting, I'll be opposing this as well.
So to just expand on the commercial vehicle issue, just so we have the comparison, our current rules on commercial vehicles is, it's much more black and white. If, if the gross vehicle weight is over seventy-five-hundred pounds, it's prohibited in a residential district. Under seventy-five-hundred pounds can be parked like any other vehicle. That's our, those are basically our commercial vehicle rules. One policy change that could be made is simply to treat RVs the same way. Just an option. But we're prepared to take direction on whatever direction the council wants to go.
Who's gonna go out and whale?
Yeah.
Hey, maybe this is a question for you, is, does this directive have to come from the planning commission, or can the council override that and just do, do our own thing?
So there's two, two different ordinances here. One is a zoning ordinance. That's the one that deals with the yard. That's amending the zoning ordinance. So we have a recommendation from the planning commission on that ordinance that the council can still adopt, could do whatever it want to with it. It was just a recommendation in favor of that from the planning commission. The other ordinance, I think was also sort of recommended, or the, the, the council asked the planning commission, I think, to take a look at it, but it is a police power ordinance. It's dealing with the streets, you know, the public right of way, over which really, you know, the police department is out there issuing, issuing tickets as opposed to sort of a code enforcement zoning issue. So they're really two separate ordinances, and you can treat them, you know, together, you could treat them separately. I would probably treat them separately based on the discussion and hearing. And you can, you know, you can take the, the planning commission's recommendation on both of them or, or neither of them, you know, as you, as you need it.
You sure you're going with us, Chris?
I think so.
You know, we, we as a planning commission spend time, 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 because of a directive from council. We come back and say, here's our presentation. Ah, I don't like it. Time, 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 time. What about this? Ah, I don't like it. We're, 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 we're in, we're in a really bad Ferris wheel right now. And I know, Randy, you said, you know, with all due respect, and I, I, I do, I know you mean that. But give us some suggestions.
Leave it the way it was.
Leave it as is. I'm fine with it as is. I've always have been.
I do find this a bit discriminatory in the sense that, and, and obviously, there's a group of people who camp, and they love camping. There's people who camp and say, been there, done that, raped all week, and I don't like it. But you're putting a bigger burden on the people in the community who like to camp. And not everybody has a fifth wheel or a big trailer. But even for a family that has a smaller trailer, in the sense, it's gonna be punitive or hurt them more than it is a person who has a cottage to go to. Because they can go to the cottage, you know, probably half the year, but to the one guy who wants to go camping for two weeks, 'cause he gets two weeks vacation, it's a lot more punitive to say... for two weeks, because he gets two weeks vacation, it's a lot more punitive to say, you can't put this in your driveway because your trailer's too long, especially to a lot of the people who live in the older part of our town, who have very small driveways. And that's, to me, that's the part I really don't like about it. Just me. And again, thank you. I mean, I know this is just around and around. And you, and you said it yourself, every city that you've looked at is totally different how they deal with this.
Even the most similar cities that we could come up with?
I think they want to process this like this, came up with a compromise. It's, it is, we haven't found a model RV ordinance anywhere that seems like, yeah, this is the answer.
Yeah, I would just say, I per, my personal preference, I would honor most of what's on here. It's just the parking is what I personally would strike. So I do want to honor the work. I think we asked for better enforceability. I'm not sure how we can say that the seven-day rule is enforceable. It's clearly not. And it's creating problems. So by moving to a season, we take away that idea of, well, I counted this house, and they're on day four, and I counted that house, and they're on day three. No more of that, so it's going to put somebody out of business who's looking to create problems if we take the rest of this. But the parking is the only portion for me that remains the enforceability concern. So if we're trying to figure out as a group where we stand, I want to make it very clear that I wouldn't vote to accept all of it, except the on-street parking.
Yeah, and I agree with Justin. I mean, I, I think that what the planning commission is looking to do with the zoning ordinance, I'm fine with that. It's actually less restrictive than it was previously, and were easy to enforce. And, you know, the seven-day thing and the 48-days-per-year thing, who's counting that? I mean, other than one person, but that's where the enforceability piece came in, right? And why, why is it for us to tell people how many days they can park their RV in their front yard on pavement or in their driveway? You know, it's private property, as long as it's not encroaching on somebody else's property or the public property in the street or the sidewalk. Why are we being more restrictive, I guess? So I'm with Justin. I'm fine with, I think the zoning ordinance is improvement. I just have an issue with the parking piece where we would be more restrictive.
Yeah, I think one train of thought was, you know, you say you have to be five feet away from the sidewalk. Well, we know Bo's not going to go out there with a tape measure, okay? If you're two feet, if you're one feet. If you're not hanging over it, I think that's, that's, that's plenty, right? And so I think the one train of thought was, is if you can't do that, then you can park on the street. And that's kind of what I was in favor of at the planning commission level. So if you can't do that, then this. I think this is, I personally thought this was a touch restrictive to say, if you can't do that, then you still can't do that. So, no candy.
So really, yeah, if we, if we would do that, the, the only type of person who would be perhaps negatively impacted or burdened would be the person who can't park it on their property and wants to camp during the winter. Because for whatever reason, they would only be able to be out on the street for daylight hours. And I don't know how many people that impacts, but I would think it'd be few. Many more people would benefit from these changes.
Randy?
Well, to use the term restrictive, and to Councilman Nordo's point, you just restricted half the season for those who want to go winter camping and prohibited it.
I'm still open to your point on that, but you want to not change it at all, and that's the most restrictive, which is seven consecutive days. So you meet me over here and I'll meet you over there, and maybe we can find some kind of here.
So I just want to make sure I understand this, and I've just talked to the city attorney, but just, it's really solidifying my, I like the chart that you, you did. So the chart is really covered by the amendment to the zoning ordinance, is that right? And the on-street parking, that is covered by the city ordinance.
Yes, the, the, the bottom row of the chart is the ordinance 25 amendment. The rest of the chart is the zoning ordinance.
Okay, yeah.
15.06B of the zoning ordinance.
Thank you for that.
There's also an update to the definition of recreational vehicle in the amendment. It's not reflected in the chart. It's not a policy. It so much as a language thing, but yeah, for the most part, it's here.
Okay. So, do we want to take up the zoning ordinance first, and that's the one that deals with the front yard parking and the side and rear yard park, yard parking, but not the on-street parking? Do we want to take that up or take neither one of them up?
Is there a number on this? Who do you want to take up?
Uh, ordinance 24-007, yeah. That does not deal with on-street parking. It's just the front yard and the side yard and rear yard.
Pardon?
Are you looking for a motion?
Yeah.
Okay. I knew that was a, because it was originally to introduce on table, right?
Correct, so we wouldn't be adopting it tonight. It's just to introduce it.
Okay, so I, I motion an introduction of zoning ordinance number 24-007, with the outline changes.
Okay. So support for that?
Support.
Motion, support. Any other comments or questions? This is just to introduce.
Yeah, you know what? I will weigh in one piece of information that maybe not the rest of the council knows, is that the planning commission is having a special meeting next Monday. I don't know if this can be added to that agenda or not, but that's a small piece of information that probably nobody else here knows.
That's true. I don't actually know if we can add agenda items to a special meeting, though.
It's the, you, you can, is the, is the theory that
Have further discussion on this at the?
I'm just saying, we're meeting next week. We're meeting.
And, and July 10th.
And July 10th is our next meeting because of the holiday, so it's much longer.
So we only need 18 hours notice of a special meeting, so you could certainly, you know, if you noticed it, then you're good in terms of special meeting. You could have discussion about this item at the special meeting if you wanted to before, you know, there's further action by the council on this, that would be possible.
I'm not asking for anything. I'm just saying that that's a piece of information that we would want to know.
Other comments, questions? Motion to introduce? Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Truist?
Yes.
Vanderwaal?
Yes.
Gelderlos?
No.
Merrinka?
Yes.
Norvuk?
Yes.
And Mayor Mas.
Yes. Sir, motion to table ordinance 24-007.
Support.
Motion? And?
Support.
It's a point. Marcy, would you, let's see, do we need to roll on this, or?
Yeah.
Usually they don't.
Okay. All right, okay. If motion support to table, all in favor, please say yes.
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 And the opposition, please say no. Great. Next item on the agenda is ordinance number 318, and that is the one that Chris has described. And this is dealing with the issue of on-street parking and recreational vehicles. What's your pleasure with this?
Motion to table.
And we have support from Paul.
Yeah, support.
To table?
Sure.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say yes.
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 And the opposition, please say no. All right, so that one's been tabled. The other one has also been tabled, but we're going to take it up. We didn't even introduce the on-street parking, so.
I don't know if there's some clarification that might be helpful to our audience members, but essentially, what the council has done is taken the first step towards introducing the zoning ordinance proposal that deals with the front and side yard requirements, and then tabled it, which is the procedure towards adoption that leads to ultimately the city council removing it from the table and deciding finally whether they wish to adopt that. And that would be scheduled for the next city council meeting on the 24th, I believe it is. The second item, which is the portion related to on-street parking, amending the code of ordinances to prohibit on-street parking within those hours, they did not introduce that. They simply tabled it. So that's not on, at this point, the same path towards adoption that the first component is. And I think the, I would assume that what that means is the council wants to think about that more, or may wish to have the planning commission have more discussion about that. And there's not support at this point in the city council to introducing that as a formal ordinance. Is that helpful? Does that clarify? Okay. And if I'm misspeaking?
It helps me understand exactly what you're saying.
No, I knew all of it.
No, that's very helpful. Thanks.
Will there be something going out if you do decide to bring that up again?
Just, I, my best advice is keep an eye out on the agenda. If you go to cityofgranville.com, look on their agenda. It's usually out on Friday by noon before the Monday, so that would be, yeah, that's the, really the best way to keep track of what we're, what we're going to be talking about. Or you can call City Hall, or call any of us. Yeah, thank you.
One quick question, maybe out of order.
Oh, I know.
Why can't you enforce, again, 98b, 98, a seven-day timeline? You have people out there that complain. Police department has to be involved and tell someone complains. Then they send someone by and say, hey, start now, you have seven days.
I think Chris is ready to respond to that.
And that doesn't happen, then the person has to move in seven days. You notify them. I just, hey, I think higher of our city of being able to enforce rules versus say we throw the rule out. You can't do anything. You start another one. Because I'm a neighbor, I'm there playing. Now the police can get involved and tell them they don't have any, I don't know, I just clarified. Help me understand.
So the big, the big issue we run into on enforceability is we don't know when day one is. We know when the complaint came in. We know when we verified the complaint. We don't know how many days it was there before that. Potentially, it would be reasonable to say, all right, we're just going to count the day that the enforcement officer sees that that's day one, come back seven days later. We're not really enforcing a seven-day rule at that point, though we're enforcing some longer period additionally. Without checking back each individual day, we don't know if it left and came back. And then the last aspect that's been found to be problematic is just the simple administrative burden of if there's several of these going on at once, when do we have to check back? How many? How many days has each one been? It's not impossible to keep track of that, but the city's code enforcement resources are just, that stretches them. And I'm, at this point, I'm just repeating what I've heard. This is not personal experience of mine, but this is what I understand code enforcement officials in the city have dealt with from administrative burden. Additionally, we also received advocacy on that point that is too restrictive. Aside from the enforceability, we also received advocacy it was too restrictive, which we could take or leave either way, but we did receive that advocacy.
Is it also accurate that our ordinance in the seven-day time limit doesn't specify how long a vehicle would have to be removed in order to reset the clock?
It does not.
And so theoretically, a vehicle could be there for six days and 23 hours. It could be moved and brought back an hour later, not be in violation, and restart a seven-day count.
Yes, that, that has also been discussed heavily. And, yeah, that, that definitely makes it harder to enforce. You're there on day three, you show back on day five, and it's like, it's gone on day four. How do you know that? How can you verify that? We don't know. That's been the problem.
It's not a simple one.
It's experienced on the ground. Yeah.
It's got some complexity to it, but just would tell our guests that obviously, your comments have been taken seriously tonight, so appreciate you spending the time with us. Next item on the agenda is resolution number 3248, and that's a resolution regarding our commitment to spend the additional mill, 1.5 mill on streets. Did I summarize that, or, actually, I don't know, maybe Justin Nordhug drafted this or something?
I did not draft it, so I can't send it forward as a draft, and I just provided some.
No, I think that's great. I think that helps understand why the mileage rate went up and what that money is going for. It's not redecorating the city manager's office or anything like that.
Can vouch for that.
So that's resolution 3248. Is there a motion to adopt that resolution?
Support.
Support? Any discussion? Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Vanderwaal?
Yes.
Gelderlos?
Yes.
Merrinka?
Yes.
Norvuk?
Yes.
Truist?
Yes.
And Mayor Mas.
Yes. Next item is consent agenda. Approval would be in the best interest of the city because it does have a couple purchases. Library purchases, one for a stage and some display tables. We also have some reports from the police department, which are always interesting. Enjoyed reading that again. And the treasurers may report, and the planning commission minutes from May 1, as well as the environmental sustainability committee minutes from May.
We also have Cambridge Library branch manager, Josh Bernstein, here tonight, and he can address any questions on the library purchases.
All right, great. So you're kind of behind the podium there.
Do you want to speak to it all, or?
Sure, why not? Absolutely.
There's not much to it. We budgeted, I believe, $16,000 this year for some tables. That was really the only thing at the end of our building project about, about two and a half years ago or so now that didn't end up in there. That would have been very useful, was enough tables for book displays. So we've been using a lot of the rolling tables from the commons to modify that. So we budgeted for them. We found a couple of options that matched different tables in the building. The ones we currently have for display to get matching ones would have been close to $30,000, but to match some of the other tables that are seating tables in there, but would look nice in there, came to this price of $12,971.07, and so that's what we're putting forward there. And then the other request was not a budget request, but falls within money's left in the, in the library budget. We often request that DPW bring over the, the stage pieces that are, I don't know, stored somewhere. And Scott Feenstra graciously brings them over to us, but they are very large and very heavy. And so after the last time, he did say that if there was ever money left in the budget, they are ones that he discovered that are the same size, but they're on casters, and they fold up and would fit, roll right out to the elevator and down to the basement. It could be stored without having to have any real challenge. So with money remaining, we, I talked to Charlie, and we thought we would put that in there as well, so.
Great. Thank you. So is there a motion to adopt a consent agenda in the best interest of the city?
Support.
Motion and support. Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Gelderlos?
Yes.
Merrinka?
Yes.
Norvuk?
Yes.
Truist?
Yes.
Vanderwaal?
Yes.
And Mayor Mas.
Yes. Ken, city managers report. We've already done the first item.
We have, so we've got a few consecutive agreements that I'll relate to in one way or another to the police department. I think because we have three in a row, we might be able to be more efficient if I ask the chief to step up and address all those at one time and answer any questions that council might have, and then perhaps a series of motions at that point.
Welcome, chief.
Thank you. Like Ken said, we have three of them. Going with the first one, it's our yearly renewal of professional services agreement with Children's Assessment Center. Children's Assessment Center is a multidisciplined organization that does the interviews on child victims of sexual assault cases. It is the best model for victim advocacy. It allows them to go to a single place, do one interview. The interview is done with forensically trained interviewers. It's recorded, and it's less traumatic to the victim. There has been a slight increase in the yearly cost, but we still have enough money in our services agreements line item for that. I'm going to just roll through all three.
I think so. And if you want to pause after each one?
I just have a comment. This is a great organization. I, I go to a building next door twice, twice a week, and it's a great facility. They have an outdoor garden. It's really good, and I know they do really important work there.
And just for the, the trauma that the kids have already endured versus being able to go to that nice facility with stress dogs, the appropriate play areas, like you indicated, versus coming into our stark interview room. So it's very, very good and very appropriate. Next one is Axon cameras, which are our body cameras and our in-car cameras. Last year, Uh, last year, uh, we were authorized to go up to twenty-eighth floor, and we're not quite there yet. But we are working, uh, very diligently to, to get to that point. So we didn't, uh, um, move forward with trying to get that twentieth camera because we knew we weren't going to get up to that staffing at that time. Uh, now it's, uh, appropriate time to add that body worn camera, as we hope to get up to our, uh, twenty-eighth floor very shortly. And we are also, uh, coming up on our refresh point. Um, if you remember when we went to the system, uh, a little over two and a half years ago, part of the contract price is a complete refresh at about the two and a half year level, which is brand new, uh, body worn cameras, all the supporting docking stations, uh, mounting equipment, that kinda stuff. That's included with the, um, in the contract price. We're due for a refresh, so by timing, uh, this purchase with, uh, a refresh, it just makes sense to make sure that it all comes in same, uh, model year, or, uh, same style and that kinda thing. As you can imagine, all the electronics on something that's worn day in and day out, um, you know, uh, two and a half years actually is a long time for, for something like that. It also includes the, uh, in-car camera for our, uh, patrol vehicle that got added to our fleet, um, in this current budget year. Uh, we didn't have, um, funding for, uh, to completely outfit it when it came in, uh, so we're looking to add that. Reason why we're asking to sign this ahead of time is there is a huge lead time with anything technology based. And this way, uh, if we get approval to sign the contracts, we can get scheduled. Uh, nothing will be received, or nothing will be built until the new budget year. Uh, the final one is for the flock camera system that was approved in our upcoming budget. Um, and again, that is mainly a logistical thing. We wait till after, uh, the budget year starts, more likely than not, it's gonna be winter before we can get the flock system up, up in operational. People, and try and answer any other questions that you might have.
Questions for the chief?
Justin? I don't have a question, but just a comment, and that is the civil liberties libertarian in me doesn't really love the flock cameras, but I figure, you know, with ring cameras and everything, there's so much at disposal, so it's, uh, not, uh, worth dying on. And I understand the importance of it and the access that it gives you in working with other municipalities and such, so. I'll be supporting it, but there is a little part of me that's, you know.
Well, to try and solve that for you, the flock camera takes picture of the car, does not take picture of the occupants. Um, but some of the search capabilities that we can, uh, do is if all we have is a black SUV with a bumper sticker, we can actually search on that. Um, there is no expectation of privacy when you are out in public. Um, just like somebody can come up and do a First Amendment audit of us, you know, the camera is there, it, we're not, you know, infringing, we're not getting, um, occupants of the vehicle, but we can do a lot by being able to place the vehicle, uh, at the scene of a crime right after it happens, so.
Thank you, that helps me accept it better. Thank you, chief.
Thanks.
Any other questions for the chief?
Clarification, I think you mentioned before when we talked about this, that being part of this network of cameras also allows us access to other municipalities.
Correct.
Collaboration between agencies, right?
Yeah, right now, uh, we are the one of, I believe, only two entities in Michigan that got extended on the free MOU because they knew that we were working towards, uh, deploying our own, uh, fleet of flock cameras. And yes, we are able to continue that once we have our own. And it'll actually be better because we can reach out and partner with our business community, because if they can act one, uh, they can grant us access to their footage. Thank you.
First item, is there a motion to approve entry into the professional services agreement with the Children's Assessment Center for total cost of, uh, three thousand seven hundred and forty dollars a year?
Some support.
Motion support. Any discussion? Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Merinda?
Yes.
Northhook?
Yes.
Truist?
Yes.
Vanderwaal?
Yes.
Delverlos?
Yes.
And Mayor Mas.
Yes. Next, is there a motion to approve a contract with Axon? First item, uh, as outlined by the chief, are the in-camera, in-car cameras in the amount of, uh, about seventy-six hundred dollars. Over to your, uh, seventy-six hundred dollars, and, uh, also a body worn cameras in the amount of about thirty, thirty-four hundred dollars as outlined by the chief. In the best interest of the city. Thank you. Everything we do is in the best interest of the city. Thank you.
Motion?
Motion.
Support.
And support. Any other questions, comments? Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Northhook?
Yes.
Truist?
Yes.
Vanderwaal?
Yes.
Delverlos?
Yes.
Merinda?
Yes.
And Mayor Mas.
Yes. Finally, is there a motion to approve, in the best interest of the city, a contract, uh, regarding the flock camera system as outlined by the chief?
It's a move.
Support.
Motion support. Any discussion? Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Truist?
Yes.
Vanderwaal?
Yes.
Delverlos?
Yes.
Merinda?
Yes.
Northhook?
Yes.
And Mayor Mas.
Yes. Ken, uh, city prosecutorial services.
Yeah, for, for many years, Varnum has served as, uh, not only our city attorney, but our prosecuting attorney as well, working with our, um, Granville Division of the fifty-ninth District Court. Um, in, uh, the last few, uh, Dave and I had conversations, and Varnum has expressed an interest in, uh, eliminating that portion of the work for the city of Granville. As council knows, the fifty-ninth District Court is, um, split between Granville and Walker divisions. It's the same judge that serves both, um, units and also the same, um, court administrator. And so, um, coincidentally, um, shortly after the conversation we had, I was also provided a proposal by our court staff to look at, um, Crystal Morgan, uh, whose proposal is in your packet tonight, uh, as, uh, a prosecuting attorney or the prosecutor for, uh, the city, uh, in our portion of the court as well, in Granville. And so, um, with that, um, Dave did a little background and research on that. Um, fortunately has a good familiarity with this particular attorney. Um, the court staff is, um, very satisfied with the work that they're seeing and had for several years at the Walker Division. It would have been possible to go out and get proposals on this, um, but that would have meant opening it up to everybody, and it would have also meant that we would have been comparing, um, probably likely cost for this, because it's gonna be the larger firms that do it, and it would have been a second provider between the two courts. So we decided to bring this proposal to council at this point for Crystal Morgan, under the recommendation of, um, the court staff, and with the concurrence of, um, of Dave and Varnum. And it also presents, in addition to the efficiencies and the familiarity and the comfort level, it also will result in a cost savings to the city, because as you can tell from this proposal, um, there's two different prices there that are, that are listed, but, you know, if I recall right, they were in the fifty-five to six thousand dollar range. And, um, the current, uh, agreement is for ten thousand dollars per month, so, um, you're gonna wind up with a net savings. And the scope of services that are included in this particular proposal, um, have been reviewed, and there's nothing lacking there. It's not like it's gonna cost less because something's not getting done. So, um, if council's comfortable, this would be one of those best interest of the city occasions, um, we can, um, authorize this agreement. And, um, I, I didn't get total confirmation, maybe you know, Dave, we had talked about a July one changeover.
Sure, yep, July one is, is what she's, uh, prepared for. And all, and if you want, I can provide more, more explanation. So historically, this is, we, you know, Varnum's had the privilege really of representing the city on some of the ordinance, or the, well, all the ordinance enforcement work. And, uh, it's been, it's been fantastic, it's been a, a good, um, a good relationship both ways because we've provided services with our associates working at a little cut, cut rate. And they've, and usually we've used younger associates to do this work, which has been great for them because they've had the opportunity of going in and doing some of this prosecutorial work, and getting the opportunity to participate in bench trials, and occasionally jury trials, and so it's been a wonderful, um, you know, uh, way to do this. The, the problem that's, that sort of has developed is, uh, you know, many of these offenses have become decriminalized, and most of this stuff now is a civil infraction. And people, frequently, they don't, people aren't concerned about a civil infraction, and so most of these things, people just pay a fine. There's no need to have a trial, there's no need to, uh, you know, hire an attorney. People don't spend the money to hire an attorney, so it's, it, it, it tends to be a lot of somebody sitting there and meeting with people and negotiating or accepting a plea. And, um, so right now, Walker is paying for, for Crystal to do that, and, and Granville is paying for Varnum to do that. So we have two attorneys that are there at the same time, and if the court had, so, so I guess we're, it's gonna, um, I'll, I'll end the first part by saying, so it's not a fantastic training, uh, kind of work anymore. And when I say training, I don't wanna say it's not good service, I think that when you have a young associate doing this stuff, and that's their, that, you know, they're all about it, right? They spend, they, they wanna spend a lot of time and then energy in doing a good job, but, you know, if it's just stuff that settles, it's not, it, it's not great training. So frequently what happens is you've got, uh, cases that are Walker cases, cases that are Granville cases, and the court might schedule those on Mondays from nine to noon. So you have, you have the court calling a case for Granville and a case for Walker, and then a case for Granville, and then a case for Walker, and you've got somebody sitting there the whole time representing each city. And so there's an efficiency to having one person, you know, representing both, so the, the, the price is lower to the city, and, um, we think that, that's a great, a great economy of scale that the city can realize as well, especially because it's not, you know, a fantastic training opportunity for some of our associates. The other thing I'll mention is I've known Cr- Crystal since about twenty-twelve. She started at, uh, Wild Weathers, which merged with Varnum in, in twenty-sixteen, and I was there when she started. And I was, I was a partner, she came on board as an associate. One of the hardest working attorneys that, you know, I, I worked with, and I think is, is pretty, uh, resoundly well liked by the court staff. She does ordinance enforcement for Walker, and, and of course, that seems to like, uh, her, her work. So I think it's a, a great opportunity for, um, you know, for certainly city and for Crystal as well, so. Uh, we, we support it.
Well, we appreciate all your years, and I, and we appreciate, um, the discounted rate that you've been working. It's been very helpful, but this sounds like a real win for the city of Granville.
I think so.
Ken, anything else?
Um, on that, no.
Is there a motion to enter into this contract, which I notice is, uh, terminable by us in our sole discretion? So that's nice. So is there a motion to enter into this contract with the law for, for Crystal Morgan?
It's a three-year term, correct?
Yes. But it's terminable with, with thirty days now, so you, you can fire your attorney. It's, it's, you can't, can't force you to stay as your attorney, so you can, but it is for three-year term, terms of the rates.
Motion?
Support and motion and support. Any other questions, comments? Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Vanderwaal?
Yes.
Delverlos?
Yes.
Merinda?
Yes.
Northhook?
Yes.
Truist?
Yes.
And Mayor Mas.
Yes.
Ken, anything else before we, uh, yeah?
No, I think, uh, at this point, uh, as we talked in earlier in the approval of the agenda, we would like to, uh, request that council recess only into a close, a brief close session. I think we can keep it really short for you. But, uh, we do wanna, um, have discussion, um, about, um, legal information that's provided by the city attorney prior to taking action on the last item, so, um, we would intend to come back and take action at the conclusion of the close session.
So before we do recess, let's, uh, do council member comments. Randy?
A little tongue in cheek, but, uh, I wish, I wish the Mr. Civil Liberties guy here, Justin, cared a little bit more about people being able to use their property year round. There's the irony for the night. And let me know what the fine's gonna be, okay? Gosh.
Josh.
So I was just gonna say a couple things. First, uh, appreciate the memo from Charlie in the packet about all the park amenity improvements. I don't know if you've all been around to see the stuff that's been going on. A lot, a lot of it was done last year, started last year, finished this year, and that sort of thing, but pretty much every, every park has had something improved, I think, over the last couple of years. And as you know, most of that, or a lot of that, has come from our decision to use our funds to, to help with some of those improvements. So nice pictures, um, it's nice to see those projects coming to completion, and the pickleball courts are open, I hear, this week now. Those are finished, I know people will be really excited about that. Things are finishing up and looking really, really good in the parks, so thank you so much for all the work, and your staff as well, for the work that they've been doing on that over the last couple of years. I did wanna let everybody know that I did submit a, um, application for the Community Excellence Awards for the MML this year again, uh, for the, our downtown placemaking project, is what I called it, which includes the commons and the, uh, market pavilion, and kind of the synergy that we created around that space. Teresa was aware that I was gonna submit that again this year, she helped us do that last year as well, and kind of expanded on what we had worked on last year. Got lots more pictures to, to use to add to our application, so that's been submitted. Just to let you know that, we'll find out sometime, I think mid-July or so, if we're one of the four finalists, that I get to compete on the island if it's mentioned for, for that prestigious award, so, uh, keep an eye out for, for that. And then just wanted to say, um, welcome to our, our police cadets that started, uh, Max Jacobus and Peter Cooperus, a couple guys that, uh, started with us in the last week or so, right, in the cadet role, so. If you see them around, hopefully we'll see them around in the parks and at some of our events and stuff, stop and say hello, but look forward to meeting them.
In the spirit of election season, I'll say that since my name was mentioned, I'm going to respond, and that is, uh, that, um, the proposal that I accepted was six consecutive months, one hundred and eighty days of parking on your property without any restrictions. That's far less restrictive than seven days. And as I said at the beginning, I'm very open to hearing more of a solution, um, from Councilmember Delverlos on the Witcher issue. I, I welcome that solution at the next meeting, and I will be all ears for that.
Let's talk about it.
I, I reclaim my time, reclaim my time, no, just kidding. But, um, to add on to that, I didn't hear any people tonight, or any other night, say, please go to the less restrictive seven days, that doesn't make any sense. So I voted for the less restrictive option. Um, but beyond that, um, I did wanna thank everyone, it seems like, uh, pools, puppies, and RVs are long meetings, and so this was one of them. And, uh, so thank you to all the city staff who remained, and thank you to all of the members of the public who stayed, and the planning commission. I did, as I said, want to honor the work that was put in, and I do appreciate that. Hopefully, by us making a decision up here, it does take the pressure off a little bit of the planning commission. Now no longer do you have to deliberate on this issue. We're not gonna make everyone happy. Within the RV community, there's people who have all different beliefs, we saw that tonight. So, um, we can be the bad guys on that and take this up, so, um, happy to do that. And then I was just gonna say, as we're preparing to recess into closed session, I did reach out to Ken, and then via Ken, to the city attorney today, on this issue, it is my opinion, um, that I no longer will abstain, um, because I abstained for the process portion of this, which was to determine the candidate, and I feel that that is over, and now we're just talking about conditions in terms of employment, which are now the process of selecting a person. So I said without objection, I, I planned to participate in that, and, uh, the city attorney, uh, signed up on that as well. There's no conflict of interest there, so I just wanted to say that, but, thank you.
No objection, and thank you for explaining, but I'm sure nobody else had an objection either.
Alright.
Nothing else to add, except, uh, Fourth of July coming up, as you all know, Fourth of July parade coming up. My wife has convinced me to go to my brother's house for this Fourth of July, so I will not be around. But assuming council, there is a spot in the parade for council, if council's gonna have an entry in the parade, you have a spot. But if you're not gonna be in the parade, let us know. Take your spot out. One important thing to know, one big change, if you haven't been paying attention, because you may think that you know everything about the Fourth of July, having been here in Granville for so long, but we moved the parade time up one hour. It's gonna start at ten AM this year, not eleven, everybody, yeah, ten AM. So, uh, hopefully it'll be a, maybe, you know, maybe it'll be some other benefits, and anyway, we're trying it out, but, uh, that's something that could potentially scoop people up if they're not aware of it.
As soon as I've got sex anyway, put their chairs over here.
Right, oh, yeah, right. That's all.
Yeah, I guess I had some, something else to say too, but the Fourth was on my, my radar too. I mean, do we, who's gonna be around, who wants to be a part of it? Obviously Paul's out. to be around? Who wants to be a part of it? Obviously Paul's out. Randy, you ride your bike?
I'll walk.
You're, you're not going to do your own?
I usually am like right with you, but yeah, I, yeah, probably if you're cold, then somebody can pour ice water for us.
I can try to, if I ask, like Boardman last year, I said a pickup works better because we can put a lot of stuff in the back, so I can do that again. I'm assuming you're always up north.
I will not be this year, so I can't, I'll be around.
Maybe that's just the.
You'll be around too this year because I'm on the weekend. Yeah, Tim's not here tonight.
And I'm around, so, okay. I'll reach out to Boardman for it.
Um, yeah, just encourage people to attend to Music, Food, and Fun. Um, Teresa consistently dials up nice weather for that, so, um, thank you for that. I did not get a chance to attend the last one, but I will try to be there this week. And then one note about, um, our, some, some environmental sustainability committee things. The four seminars we held, uh, we had an estimate of about 60 people that attended. Um, we consider that a success, and then if you did get a chance to attend the plant expo, uh, under the pavilion, we estimated we had 200 people attend, and all vendors that were there were very pleased with their sales and their contacts they made, so if and when we do it again, check it out. That's it.
Farmers market's up and running and a lot of fun, and also, uh, went to the dedication of the musical garden, which was awesome. Teresa really knows how to throw a party, and that was a lot of fun, and. Okay, I was, well, yeah, you both work so well together, so, anyway, that was, that was a great, uh, dedication. I went the other, I think the next day, some kids were, two kids were playing on the dialophone, so a lot of fun. All right. Is there a motion to recess into closed session for the purpose of confidential opinion of council?
So moved.
Motion and support. Marcy, would you call the role, please?
Councilmember Galderlos?
Yes.
Merengue?
Yes.
Northak?
Yes.
Truist?
Yes.
Vanderwaal?
Yes.
And Mayor Mas.
Yes.
All right. We'll take a couple minute break. So we've spent some time talking about the proposed, um, city of Granville employment agreement with a candidate that we've selected, Griffin Graham. Uh, copy of the contract was in the council packet, which is also online, and we've talked about making some small changes, and I'll go through those in paragraph, uh, section two. There's no change. We talked about a possible change, but there'd be no change to that. Paragraph three, the words, uh, and for each subsequent year will be added on the fourth line after the date, July 1, 2025. So after July 20, as of July 1, 2025, and for each subsequent year. Uh, the next paragraph, final paragraph on the first page, uh, the MERS 401 rollover plan, we're substituting the MERS 457 account because that's what Griffin has. Then in paragraph eight, second line from the bottom, the word expenses, we're going to add a couple of words right before that. We're going to put dues and reasonable, so it will say dues and reasonable expenses. And then on the final, uh, line in paragraph eight, uh, before city council approval, we'll say, we're going to add the word advanced, or advance, city council approval. Uh, then on paragraph nine, we're going to tweak, we're going to, um, tweak the language a little bit about vacation leave and limited to vacation leave account will be initially credited with 40 hours upon the city manager's employment start date, and then we're going to put in a provision and we're, we're going to work on the language, but the substance will be, and then, in the first, uh, the city manager will accrue vacation at the same rate as, um, 15-year, um, employee or 15-year level, but not to exceed four weeks in the first year. Thereafter, vacation will, uh, accrue at the 15-year rate.
If you have to say the 15-year rate, you might just say it at the same rate or at, per the vacation policy. I got to think about that second. You may be right.
All right.
That's where we need language.
Okay, we'll get to all language, but the gist is that there'll be four weeks of vacation every year. Final, um, adjustment will be in paragraph number 11, under other benefits. We're going to add this language at the end of that paragraph. Additionally, the city will reimburse the costs of COGRA continuing coverage for the city manager until the standard health insurance coverage begins on September 1, 2024. And I think, Marcy, you've got that language already, so. All right, so is there a motion to approve that employment contract as amended? Thank you.
Yes, and are we also motioning to, um, empower you and Randy to bring that to Griffin as a proposal?
Yes. Motion and support. Any other comments or questions? Randy, maybe we can get on a conference call tomorrow or something. Marcy, would you call the role, please?
Councilmember Merengue?
Yes.
Northak?
Yes.
Truist?
Yes.
Vanderwaal?
Yes.
Galderlos?
Yes.
And Mayor Mas.
Yes.
Anything else? Ken?
No.
It's a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Support.
Support. All of us in favor, please say yes. Yes, in the opposition, please say no. Great, thank you.